Good morning. Apologize we're late. And welcome to the Thursday, June 26, Commissioners Open Session. And as always, we'll start with pledge allegiance at a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ministry, I think so. I think, yeah.
Yeah, good morning, Carroll County. Just a couple of brief announcements. I think my colleagues are probably going to be mentioning NPRP and the fact that we're paying close attention to what's going on there. Those issues and many others, solar comes to mind, are particularly vexing for us. We want to do everything we can, and in particular, in terms of the solar, for people who are monitoring that situation here in the county. You know, the board unanimously voted to prohibit solar on agricultural land back in 2023, and through the Planning and Zoning, excuse me, to the Public Service Commission, those applications continue to move. And we're paying particular attention to the situation down on Fannie Dorsey Road. It's particularly tragic. You've got two solar projects going in about a mile and a half apart. Some of them are right outside people's doors, so we're continuing to watch that. Any opportunity we have, we've got members of the board here during, in those hearings and during the virtual hearings. So, we see the emails from everybody. We know this isn't going to stop, unfortunately. That's the part that we really have to take into account. This is really just the beginning. But to all those folks out in the county who are dealing with the NPRP issue and the solar issue, we are paying attention. We are monitoring it, and we are hearing you. So I just want to make that clear to everybody this morning, and that's all for me. Thank you.
Morning, Carroll County. Just sort of following up with Commissioner Garin's comments, I'm gonna leave my comments about a variety of other things I've attended in the past week or so for next week. Obviously, this is considered to be priority Carroll, so I think it's only proper to mention something that I think is urgent and clearly a priority in our county. Commissioner Kyler recently mentioned in his podcast about the solar issues, and obviously, we're very disappointed with the outcome of the federal case recently regarding the property rights here regarding the NPRP power lines. And I think, as elected, it puts us in an interesting position, because this is not just something that's going to affect us today, or next week, or next year, but this is setting a precedent as to where we're headed in the future. And I don't think it's just for Carroll County. I think it's nationally as well. When we're being told that someone can actively access private property for an unknown amount of time with no timeline of a project that's been approved, or when they need to be off the property, I think that speaks volumes to both the concerns of both the county, but also the people that live here and our residents that we all were elected to serve. Looking at this, you know, county government has not been named in this, in this portion of this lawsuit. We are not currently in that, but there's roughly 90 to 117 properties that are. And this is something that I have a real challenge sleeping at night, knowing that whether it be ag pres, whether it be the community, whether it be tax dollars, both state and local, that we've all put aside for this, and it affects our way of life. And I know Commissioner Vigliotti likes to talk about love for home quite a bit, and I think we have commissioners have to do more than just step up and talk about it and work with our colleagues. And I know this is a huge fight. I know this is a fight that's far from over. We knew when this fight showed up, we were all unified at a public meeting, and I think that we have to stand there and continue to do that. With that being said, and I realize this isn't going to be a typical morning for priority Carroll, but I'm going to ask my colleagues to do something that's not typical this morning. And I'd like to see us take 100,000, I'm gonna make a motion to take $100,000 out of the Reserve for Contingency Fund to be set aside, that we will potentially later allocate to be used to fight this fight, because this isn't just Carroll, this is Carroll County's fight. This is everybody's fight. And I can't see any way that we don't continue and move forward with this.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I, I don't understand the motion. We're taking money out to fight this. We're already have attorneys fighting it.
Yes, we have attorneys fighting this, but we also have a community at large that can't fight this on their own. And as we've just learned, we're not currently named in the current part of this. So I would like to see us, at the very bare minimum at this moment, set some money aside as a good faith movement towards those that we support that are part of our community, and let them know we have their backs. It's one thing, and I know we all support this. I know we all want to fight this. But it's one thing for us to continue to have conversation, but we have people that are absolutely panicked right now. I've had at least 30 phone calls since Friday night, and it concerns me. I know it concerns all of us. I'm not going to speak for any of us up here, other than myself, but it concerns all of us. And I think the people need to know, yes, we have their backs, but I think we need to really, truly put that out there and let them know that. And I think this does that.
I've got a couple of things. First off, I'm not sure why you haven't brought this to each one of our attention until 9:20 priority Carroll. I mean, I, this is a, out of left field, $100,000, which I'm not sure where it would go. I think we need to put it on the agenda, have our legal advisor and our management budget come in, have this conversation with us, how to best allocate money, if it's appropriate to be allocated, from where it should be allocated. I mean, there's a lot that should be done before we allocate or execute our dollars or our taxpayer dollars. Absolutely agree that we should use the resources we have to minimize the effects of our property and our community. I absolutely agree with that. From the very beginning, and we all knew this, all, all of us, Commissioner Kyler and I met with the governor two years ago, I think, or a year, something like that, and with Frederick County and Baltimore County. And the governor said, we do not agree with where this is going. We need to look at this as a team in a region to, to have the appropriate effects. Not surprised at the, the ruling that occurred. I don't agree with it, but I'm not surprised. It's unfortunate that it happens on a Friday afternoon, you know, and then everybody goes home for the weekend. And then, the first time we're coming together is this morning. So I applaud your intent of supporting the community and working to minimize the effects of this program and this process, you know, there's no real process. But I do believe that it is not a 9:20 on a Thursday, all of a sudden, it's the first time I'm hearing that you want to allocate our resources and, or, or money. I mean, time, people, and money, that's, that's resources. And it's not mine. It's our county's, and I want to make sure we are doing what's appropriate for the entire county. I don't know if it's the right place to pull money from. If it is, then that's great. I don't think a decision needs to be made today to pull money from Reserve for Contingency. We can stop everything and put it, get it on the agenda. We can meet whenever you want, later today, tomorrow, Saturday, to get the work group together, give it fair time, because that's what we do with open agendas. I mean, that's our, that's our responsibility. So I, I'm more than happy to meet, you know, at a later time. It doesn't have to be on Thursday. It could be any appropriate time, but we have to give the community the time to understand what this type of action is, especially if you're talking about allocating and executing dollars. And I'm all for that. I'm all for putting it on the schedule. Not a schedule that's going to be in a month, or two, or three, but if you want to do it this afternoon, or tomorrow, or whatever, we can have that conversation.
I do want to ask one question to Commissioner Rothstein. We were in a meeting less than three months ago, where something was brought up, which was not discussed by all five of us. It was brought up during budget cycle. Commissioner Vigliotti questioned the reasoning and the intent of the vote.
What are you talking about?
When we, when we discussed the 13 million that we were looking at for the possible school system, myself, you, and Commissioner Kyler, on that day, voted, which Commissioner Vigliotti very, I guess I would say vigorously mentioned the point that it was not a typical process in the budget process. But we did allocate the three of us to move that forward.
Okay.
I personally don't really see that much of a difference than this, because, you know, as we've all talked about at length, while we've been in office here, the blueprint has been a significant, and it is a priority, both on the education and budget front. But for the community, I really don't view this as any differently. The only difference in this would be that we're-
I can't make a diff-
Well, no, hold on.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
No, I'd like to answer this.
I got this one.
I brought that up.
No, no, well, hold on, Ken. Just because this $13 million was discussed for months and brought up during town halls from CCPS, and we've had that conversation. It was not a, a new, new event that, that happened. And if it, if it was, and we did something, then, I won't say two wrongs don't make a right, but let's do this appropriately and, and not grandstand.
This isn't similar, this isn't at all similar to that.
I mean, but to me, I feel like we're grandstanding an event that I knew nothing about, about $100,000. If you want to talk NPRP, you want to talk process, you want to talk, you know, the impact to our community, absolutely. And I'm 100% for it, and I was, I won't say the first, but I, I went to the people, I believe, had the ability to have an impact, and that was the company that has been contracted to do this. That was the state, that was our legislators, that was the people. We had multiple town halls with our legislators, and we brought a lot of folks together, thousands of folks together. So that's the way to do it, is you bring people together and you say, what do you want us to do? I believe if we want to allocate resources and dollars, then we need to do it the right way. And I don't know the impact it'll have. I don't know if it's $100,000 or a million dollars. I don't know. So my request is, let's move forward with your intent in allocating resources to something specific, but let's get the folks together and do it. I can't compare a decision with $13 million that I believe was discussed during multiple open sessions, town halls, joint sessions with CCPS, and I am so proud that we provided as much resources to CCPS as we believe we could during the budget. So I apologize.
I don't disagree with you. I'm just-
I need to bring up, I brought up the 13 million. I gave the courtesy to everybody sitting here to discuss it multiple times, one-on-one. We couldn't do it in a quorum. Everybody knew exactly why it was coming up, when it was coming up, that budget was on the agenda. This has nothing to do with this. I didn't do it as a cheap political scheme, secret from everybody else. And what really offends me? People in the community knew you were bringing this up this morning. I've been told by others this was coming up this morning.
Cheap political scheme. How is this politics to protect the community?
So, can I finish, please?
Sure.
So I didn't get the courtesy of you talking about it enclosed or one-on-one, that, that you were coming, that you were going to bring this up, but community people knew it was. I find that very disappointing. And please don't compare it to any motion I've made up in the two and a half years I've been here, because I try to be, show courtesy to each of the other members, and I don't think, maybe the original zoning on ag stuff, maybe, maybe I brought that up cold, but I'm offended that you'd even compare it to that.
Well, if I-
I, I, I was open with everybody, one-on-one about it, way before that.
Well, if I might, before we get a little too far afield here, we are all committed against the NPRP. We're all against the power lines. I believe what Commissioner Gordon is talking about today is designating, or saying we're going to designate $100,000 or a portion of our, our reserve for contingencies specifically for stopping the NPRP, stopping the NPRP, the efforts against it. He's not saying we're going to spend this money today. He's not saying we're going to throw it out the window, or whatever the case is. He's saying we're going to set aside a portion of this specifically for combating the NPRP. I don't think it's a cheap political stunt. I mean, we've, we've been talking for months ourselves, since last year, about ways that all of us collectively as a board can find to stop this thing. You know, yes, you know, maybe, you know, it could have been a question of discussion a couple of weeks ago, but, but the point was, is that the, the decision got handed down, you know, last week. This wasn't something that, that, you know, we've had time to, to consider. So I think what Commissioner Gordon is doing here is trying to deal with the situation as it is evolving. So he's not asking us or committing us to, to spend the money today. He's asking us to appropriate or to designate a portion of our reserve for contingencies specifically for anti-MPRP efforts.
So let's focus on that intent. That, I'm all for that. I'm, let's focus on the intent, but don't put a dollar amount, because I don't know what $100,000 is. I don't know if it's, should be 100,000, a million, or 5 million. Let's put the intent that we will consider funds from reserve for contingencies to be used, or other locations, if that's not the right place, and let's get the right folks in the room to tell us the impact of whether that money should come from reserve for contingencies, should it come from another location, and, and let's have that meeting. But I do not want to commit to a dollar amount without knowing the impact that that dollar amount would either have, or would impact on our community. I don't know. And I, I don't think that's fair, because it's, it's the first thing I'm hearing of this, is this morning. I didn't hear from the community that this was going to happen, that there was going to be an announcement. I was curious, because we have filming and photographers, which we don't typically have, but I, I just, I'm like, okay, let's, let's discuss what we believe the impact of the decision that was made. Let's not grandstand and say, we're going to put X amount of dollars, we're gonna, no, everybody knows we're going to do something. If we want to announce another town hall, say, what do we need to do? If we want to have a special session, given the time, to get our resources and, you know, folks in place, then let's do it. But I do not want to just say, let's put $100,000 in a place where I don't know what, what the impact is.
And I, I understand that the-
I have two questions, since Ted is now here, and our attorney's here. We're talking the budget, and the budget isn't on today's agenda. To, to, can we legally draw money out of something with nothing on the agenda, telling the public we're going to do it?
I'll, I'll ask Ted. Aren't reserve from contingency transfers done at, at a public session after agenda item, because they constitute an amendment to the budget?
Yeah, that'd be, the first thing I was going to say is, yes, I think this needs to be an agenda item. And then, the, the second, I don't know where we would move it to. There, there is no budget to, to do this. But even, you know, with the intent of what you're doing here, sitting in the reserve for contingency, it is available whenever you, you want to get to it. So if you ended up needing money for legal fees or something like that, next week, or a month from now, you could move money to, to Tim's budget, and then we would have a place to, to spend it from. And I guess-
You would trust Tim budget? All right, well, okay.
I'm kind of forced to.
Yeah, okay.
Now, if you know that your intent is this would be available for legal fees, that might take care of my second question. I'd still say it needs to be an agenda item, but then the transfer we would put together would be from the reserve contingencies to the county attorney's budget. If you're not sure what the money would be used for, then I don't know where we would move it.
Well, we would specifically create a category for legal expenses for NPRP, I would imagine.
Uh, you, you can't-
If it's got to go under legal, right?
Can't just do that, though. You would actually have to open up your budget to create a new budget.
To amend the budget.
See, that, right, that's, that's, that's the, the mechanical problem here, is you can't create a new place to spend money from.
And we have, we have spent attorney money, outside attorneys and inside, for zoning, for NPRP, to, to fight this, and we didn't have to open up the budget and change something. I'm not even sure if this is necessary, that we modify the budget. I'm, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure what $100,000 is based on, how many hours that is, how much stuff that is, or, or if it's just shooting from the hip. But, but we have spent money on this without modifying the budget, correct?
I'm not aware that we spent any significant money. There was some money spent for that, that meeting we, we set up. I believe that came out of the commissioner's budget. Do you remember? So that, that was money that was already budgeted. It got used in a way different. But, you know, so the point isn't so much that you can't spend money, that you already have budgeted, it's just we have no place to make this transfer right now.
Yeah. And I, and I, again, I applaud the intent of moving resources. Again, time, people, and money. In this case, money. What I want to do is make sure we do it right. And that's putting it on the agenda, and giving ample time for the community to know that it's on, on the agenda and open- it's on, on the agenda in open session and have those conversations. Um, yeah, I, I don't know, I think it's an arbitrary number, is a hundred thousand dollars. It sounds good. It's a six-figure, and I'm like, but why not make it a million dollars, or seven hundred and something dollars? I mean, it's just a number. So, I applaud the intent, and I think we all are in the same, in, you know, desire. But, uh, I am not, uh, in a position to just allocate money where I wouldn't know where it goes, so.
And I think the big point...
So, if I, if I might, I apologize, Ted. So, I understand that there's concern about it being a hundred thousand dollars being designated, right? I'm not going to say appropriated, because we're, you know, as Ted said, and I take the point about having to amend the budget in order to put that money in a place where it can be appropriated. But if we're talking about, uh, getting something on the agenda, the intent would be, and Commissioner Gordon can correct me if I'm wrong at this point, if we're talking about putting something on the agenda to go back into budget, to talk about, uh, designating a portion of reserve for contingency, or wherever it might come from, specifically for anti-MPRP efforts, right? Um, I've, I've got no problem with that. The hundred thousand number, in my mind, again, not having discussed with Commissioner Gordon where the number comes from, in my mind, just from up here, it's, it's a placeholder. We start out with a hundred thousand, maybe it's going to be fifty in the long run, maybe it will be a million, I don't know. But the fact is, uh, and I'm, I cannot emphasize this enough, I do not believe that this is a political stunt, or this is grandstanding, or anything. It's us responding to a federal ruling that came down against private property owners, against our citizens, against the citizens that we serve. It's us saying, whether it, it has to come through a budget amendment, or whether it's going to come today, it's us as a board of commissioners, telling our citizens, the people that we serve, that we understand the concern, that we understand what's going on, and we are going to be committing ourselves in a very, very specific way, uh, moving forward to combat this.
And I, I appreciate that, but the word "us" isn't having me involved, because there's no us. I didn't know about this. So, you're saying us, as far as doesn't, I mean, I didn't know about this until I'm listening to it.
I'm speaking conversationally.
But I'm just saying, it's not us. I think us and we should put it on the agenda and figure out what the next move should be. Designate money or resources isn't, uh, again, maybe military, it's not a doctoral term to me. I either allocate, and then I execute. I, I have those conversations, and I say, I'm allocating X amount of dollars, and then the intent is to execute those dollars over this time period for this, you know, whatever I'm doing. That's the why we're doing something. Designate is a, not a term I'm comfortable with. Um, I mean, I, that, you know, it's, again, it's, it may be a doctoral thing, but, but if we're going to allocate resources, I need to know and understand where those resources are going to go, and then how those resources are going to be applied. And we all agree in the "us" that the decision made by the federal court, by that judge, was inappropriate on that Friday afternoon, and we are trying to figure out what the next step should be, without grandstanding, or politicizing, or subjectively commenting on things. If it's to be "us," then I think we should work together and discuss X amount of resources should be allocated. And if that's what it takes, like Ted said, then, then let's get on the schedule sooner rather than later. Um, but this is in no comparison to supporting our, our school system and, and the decisions we made there. That was a process that we ended up allocating those dollars and executing them to the CCPS. This, uh, I think the intent is there, I understand it, but there's mechanical pieces, process that need to take place. Um, and it's not, and, and videographers and photographers or whoever are very welcome to attend any one of our open session meetings. I mean, that's great. I'm just not used to seeing them here today, this morning, because all of a sudden, we're saying we want to do a specific action. Um, so I invite the community and anybody who wants to, uh, participate and attend our open sessions. But I'm not going to just sit back and say, let's allocate X amount of dollars because we don't like something, and we don't even know where it's going to go.
Okay, mechanically...
So, if I, if I might, um, you know, we keep bringing up the topic of the, two things. We keep bringing up the topic of the, uh, agency hearings that we had during public session. Yes, we were talking about allocating additional, uh, money for the school system. At the end of the day, it got into the budget, we all voted for the budget. But that morning, nobody had come to me to say, hey, I'm going to make a motion to add this today during agency hearings, not during a work session.
I did that. I came to you. You actually told me you were opposed to it. Don't, don't...
You said you wanted to add money. I don't remember you saying you were going to raise a motion.
I, I remember. I, I remember vividly, please. Uh, this is so disrespectful, and, and...
Well, that brings me to my second point.
And, 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 but don't, don't say things that aren't true. I...
I'm not saying anything that isn't true.
...talked to every one of you individually. I knew pretty much who was opposed and who was for it. Um, I, I brought it up more than once, so please, this has nothing to do with that. My concern is twofold. One, it's so disrespectful to the commissioners to bring something up in secret. That's sad. Um, I, I need to check my construction term. I can tell you exactly who does that kind of things. But what I'm more worried about, we're talking about spending a hundred grand, maybe more, of public money. Um, there's a hundred and seventy thousand people in this county. There's ninety properties that this crosses. I think, and we ought to investigate that, I think up to a fifth of them have already taken money to allow them onto their property. So, are we fighting for them, or are we fighting against them? Uh, I, I, I just think, my concern is, are we violating Open Meeting Act by trying to open up the budget and change something in it inappropriately without notifying the public ahead of time?
Which...
If, if you want to, if you guys want to keep secrets from me, frankly, I don't give a shit. Um, I would have brought up in this morning, enclosed, that I was bringing this motion up. And I made sure every one of the four of you knew exactly what I was doing. I probably talked to Budget, I probably talked to others. So, please, quit comparing it to something and, and quit stretching the truth to make that comparison.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to...
Done. And, but I do need to know if we're violating open meeting.
Well, hold on, because I, so I respectfully disagree, but you and I can disagree. But the other point is, the second thing that I wanted to get to is, Commissioner Gordon, would you be opposed to amending your motion to be, to be one where we put this on the budget for next week?
Yeah, I do want to amend that.
That way, we have the time. That way, everybody knows, you know, where you want ahead with this. And that way, we don't, you know, we're on the same page with that.
I think we're all for...
Well, yes, but I mean specifically, right.
And let's do the...
Well, give, so, given...
Except we do have a motion and a second currently.
Yeah, the motion is... I mean, given the urgency of this situation and how quickly it's moving, I don't think this motion is that unrealistic. I don't, so what I'm, I'm hearing you say, though, is that there would be nothing stopping us from, I mean, the term earmarking, just setting aside that amount. And that's what we can discuss when we put it on the agenda. I don't, I don't see why it would be a problem to make a motion and make a statement this morning that Board of Carroll County Commissioners is going to earmark, not allocate, not spend, not appropriate, earmark a hundred thousand dollars out of their reserve for contingency, to discuss at a later date how best to put that money to use, and if it's, if it's, if it's enough. That, to me, doesn't seem unreal, unreasonable.
I, I agree. And that, that is one path, is to simply make a statement, we have money sitting in the reserve for contingencies, we intend to use some of it for, for this purpose. Uh, if you want something, um, more formal, then I, I think you have a couple other paths. Um, one, if you're sure it's going to be used for, um, legal purposes, we do a transfer from reserve contingency to the county attorney's budget. If you're not sure what the use is, probably the easiest thing to do would be to move it to the commissioner's budget. We have a place to spend it from, and, you know, you're the ones that are going to be controlling what you're going to do with that anyway. And then the other path is the one I would push you away from, which would be creating a new budget line that doesn't exist now, because that does take us into, you know, a formal process to, to change the budget.
Yeah, so I think, uh, again, the five of us, from day one, our intent and our message has been very straightforward, and we have not wavered from that, that we disagree with this process. And we will do what we can with our resources and build the relationships necessary with our neighboring counties that are affected, with the state, with our legislators, and continue on a consistent message. I don't think that has changed or wavered, and I don't believe it will. I think making a separate motion at this point to say, we're going to earmark dollars, or it, it's regardless. I mean, we're going to do that. If I was to make a motion, it would be that, um, funds from reserve for contingencies should be considered to be used for actions involving this NPRP. It would be a very continued, consistent message that we will take whatever necessary, uh, resources to do what is right for our community. Um, I, and, and I'm all for that. I'm, I'm absolutely, from day one, uh, having those meetings with, uh, you know, the, the group that's intending to do this, having meetings with, uh, you know, those from PSC, from PJM, from the governor, from the county executives, from our peers, and is mostly, most importantly, from our community. Um, I think our message has not wavered, and I think it should stay that way. Um, and then let's put it on the agenda. Let, and let's figure out what right looks like when it comes to allocating resources.
And I think Commissioner Garren's comment, that how quickly this is moving, um, yeah, I, I, I think a motion would be appropriate, saying we want to take contingency money and spend it to help people fight this, and we want an item on next week's agenda from budget, telling us the best way to do that, because we've just said, do we move it to legal, do we move it to commissioners, where do we move it? And we are modifying the budget. I just feel like the public needs to know we're doing that. And, and I'll go a step further, since we're being political. Um, since it started, I've met with PSCG, I have met with PJM, I have met with, uh, Senator West and the local delegation. I have met with the governor multiple times. Um, I'm not sure how many out, sitting up here can say they've done any of that. Um, and I didn't feel the need to make a motion and tell you guys, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, we're driving to Baltimore because the governor said he'd meet us in the hallway and talk about this for ten minutes. Uh, but, but we've done that. I think we've consistently fought it, and, uh, and I, I, I just think we knew, need to do this correctly by the Open Meetings Act. I think all of us support that we want to fight this. And, but I don't think we can sit here and modify the budget without it being an agenda item.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, to Commissioner Garren's point, uh, Mr. Zaleski did mention that it could be, as we, as he put it, I believe, earmarked. So, if we wanted, we have a vote, we have it a second, we could vote on this, which we are at that point, and then we could also still put it on the agenda for next week for further discussion. I don't see that affecting the budget from what Mr. Zaleski just said.
I don't understand why we'd be voting for a specific number. So, I mean, I either have to vote against a specific number or abstain to that, but I think we should withdraw that motion and just say exactly what was shared by Commissioner Garren, and that is that we will, you know, I don't like the word earmark, but allocate whatever resources necessary to our community, uh, regarding the decisions made by the federal court this past Friday. And we will put it on next week's agenda, uh, appropriately, to have a discussion on what that actually looks like, and where, if we were to move funds from one place to another, should it go to legal or commissioners', uh, you know, budget? But, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out. And now we've given homework to our staff, um, to do. And between now and then, I would expect the community to be reaching out and saying, this is a, we appreciate this intent, and this is where we see dollars, uh, going. But I'm, I'd rather see something more like that. And it's not vague, except for, I don't know, the dollar amount. The intent remains the same, and I applaud it, you know, because we all feel the same. Um, and like Commissioner Kyler said, I may not agree with, uh, you know, everyone sitting around me, or those that I need to talk to, but that's not going to stop me from talking to them. And, uh, having those conversations with Baltimore County and Frederick County, and our governor, and our legislators, and our community on what right looks like. And, uh, been doing it for the last couple of years. Like you said, ten minutes in a hallway, I applaud, you know, the resources to get that done, and then be able to report back to you. Um, meeting with PSCNG, PJM, PSC, uh, same thing. Um, and municipalities that are engaged and involved. Um, I think we are doing that, and I think we need to continue to do that. Um, but I think that's what our, our statement should be, is we're going to continue to do this, and we're going to step it up by putting it on an agenda, which wasn't on the agenda for next week, and we'll modify it, the agenda, and get it on the agenda. So, it meets our open meetings, and the community can get engaged. I mean, that's what we do. So...
And, and I still have a concern that we're obligating taxpayer money without giving them any notice that we're talking about doing that. Um, and I'd like to bring up one more point. Um, I've given personal mon, money to groups fighting this. I have been to fundraisers, uh, three or four, spoke at two. Um, has anybody else up here given their personal money?
I have been at events as well and spoken. We both have...
Have you given your, that wasn't my question.
Yes, I've supported them.
You've given personal money?
I have supported them, yes.
You...
Yeah.
I just said yes.
Okay.
And we, we, uh...
Quibbling, we called it in the Army.
Yeah, yeah. And we've spoken at a few...
So, go ahead. Uh, did any more discussion? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
So, are we going to make a motion to put this on the agenda next week, Commissioner?
Yes, let's make...
Apparently, that wasn't important.
Sure, let's make a motion, have a follow-up...
We were going to do that, put it on your...
Let's have a follow-up conversation next week, put it on the agenda then. Make a motion for that.
Sure.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Crowdy, Carol, anything else?
That's it.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I'll, uh, maybe take a slightly more lighthearted note at this point, or try to, but, uh, so, uh, you know, I'll be very brief, because I know we have a lot on the agenda, and our discussion is already, uh, we've had quite a discussion so far already. So, I got to attend the quarterly Tony Towne Chamber of Commerce Business Breakfast at Thunderhead Bowl, uh, where I joined Mayor Chris Miller and Councilman Chris Tillman to hear a fantastic legislative, uh, wrap-up talk given by our committed delegate, Chris Tomlinson. Uh, now, all four of my colleagues and myself up here attend as many of these, uh, post-session wrap-ups as possible. Uh, you know, we always learn something new about what went on in Annapolis, and it matters even further, because we really do take it upon ourselves to keep as informed as we can, and to be supportive of our delegations wherever possible. Uh, second, along with Commissioner Kyler and Commissioner Gordon, I had the pleasure of meeting with the former students and friends of Robert Moton School, which is a wonderful group, if you don't know, dedicated to keeping the history of African-American students at the school, and African-American history in Carroll County alive. Uh, they're hard at work, uh, preparing for an expansion of a museum that's going to showcase that crucial part of our history. Um, and, uh, you know, this is, uh, not just a question of our county's history, but also of our country's history as well. Uh, they have a mission that, that obviously, uh, the community supports. I know at that day, for example, the Historical Society was there, with representation from the schools, other historic sites like Union Mills. And I know that, uh, some municipalities like Westminster have committed to, to standing behind, uh, this expansion. Uh, you know, it really was a phenomenal meeting. These are good people. And, uh, if there was ever a time for the community to get involved in something like this, this is certainly the, uh, the time to do it. Uh, and I know we'll certainly share more information as the, uh, project progresses, uh, including ways that the community can get involved. And, uh, Commissioner... And Commissioner, that's all from me this morning. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rothstein.
I think it was last week I was invited, and I've done it multiple times, to speak at Boy State. Boy State's an organization sponsored by our American Legion across our country. And Maryland proudly, American Legion, puts together an event for a week. They bring a contingent, a group of young men to McDaniel College. And they're all high schoolers from around the state. And they asked me to talk about, you know, county government, local government, and leadership. And what's so enjoyable for me is I give kind of a framework quickly, and then I just open up to questions, and man, they got questions. And one of the questions was, that reminds me of right now, is what happens when you disagree with your colleagues? And I said, man, that happens. And, you know, I said, we work it out. We maintain our decorum and maturity and get things done. And we learn to breathe and get through things. But that's part of government, that's part of leadership, that's part of life, to have those disagreements occur and how to work through it. You know, I, again, applaud the intent of doing this. You know, it's a shame that we don't get cameramen and photographers and other things during all our open sessions, you know? You know, but as opposed to just coming for a specific event and then, you know, whatever. But I invite everybody to actively stay involved and engaged, whether you agree or disagree. But it was a really good event. So if anybody, going back to the beginning, anybody that wants to get themselves engaged or involved, American Legion, Boy State, I applaud everything they're doing. So, that's all.
Thank you. And I have a small list, and I'll run it through quickly, since it's almost 10 o'clock. And this is important to me, maybe not most of the taxpayers. Yesterday was my 53rd wedding anniversary, and I
Happy anniversary.
I applaud Rhonda for keeping me for 53 years. And we also, yesterday was one of grandson's birthday, the day before was another, so it seems to be a popular week.
Happy birthday to all of them.
Rhonda and I did Every Step Counts at Dutter Park, and we've had two weeks since a meeting. So we did that. That's an awesome group and awesome fundraiser. We also met the Ghostbusters. At least, I'll say they were there, and evidently Rhonda's part of the Ghostbusters. But it's a great group, and these guys had a lot of fun at the event, too, and it was a great, great way to support. We also, and you already mentioned Robert Moten, the friends and prior students, we had lunch there and talked to them. They also, on Juneteenth, did a history of Carroll County, and they had a band and a couple speakers. And it's, they're using that building well, and we need to keep focusing on how they can use it more. But a great group that works hard. And Reese Carnival. That's my three granddaughters, and we took them to Reese Carnival. And I love the volunteer firemen and everything they do and how they raise funds. But to take three children and give them unlimited rides and play some games and eat, I probably need a loan, but it was great. They rode the bull.
Did you get on the bull?
No, no. I did in Houston. I haven't done it locally. And they had a band, and I think this, one of the band members was a Montgomery County firefighter, I think. But it's just a great, great thing, and I truly feel for them. Reese has had some hot days, some thunderstorms. It's, these carnivals focus on a week, and they pay, put out big money for bands, for rides, for everything they got to do. They work as hard, whether it's a crowd there or a small crowd. So I just encourage everybody to please support our volunteer firemen. Oh, and speaking of support, that's the American Legion. We had a table at their summer solstice, the American Legion in Hampstead. And that cost a little bit to get a table, but I'll be honest, the Westminster American Legion has made more money off of Commissioner Rothstein and buying drinks than I probably paid for this. But we like to support all the American Legions. I wanted to mention that also. And then MML met in Mount Airy with Frederick and Carroll County, and that was an awesome night and to hear everything they're doing. We mentioned, I think, Farm Museum a little bit. They had a volunteer night, they had a picnic, and they're one of the jewels of Carroll County. VAC had their meeting, Carroll County Trustees had their meeting. And we had cabinet meeting, and this afternoon, we're doing our monthly meeting with Carroll County Health Department. And that's really fostered communication with them. So I'll try to cut it short, and it's just been a busy week. I love Carroll County, and these groups are much of the reason why I love Carroll County. And then I also, the cabinet meeting shows our directors, but they represent all the employees. And now we're going to talk about some employees that are retiring, and they've been great, too. So who wants to start?
I'll go first. I have Ms. Robin List. And that was a very, very good transition, Commissioner.
I tried.
I'm impressed.
I can't say segue, but transition sounds good.
Segue sounds pretty cool, too. So do we have Rob in here? Please come on down to the front. So I will read a certificate of recognition that we're going to be awarding me with, and then I'll turn it over to everybody for comments. So the certificate of recognition is awarded to Robin A. List. In recognition of your 21 years of dedicated service to the clients of Citizen Services, participants in the Housing Choice voucher program since March 2004, you began your career at an entry-level housing specialist and have become the Housing Choice voucher team lead, taking on many additional roles over the years. Your ability to convey and imprint years of experience and expertise in the program has been invaluable in training new housing specialists on the intricate details of the Housing Choice voucher program and the associated systems. You will be missed not only for your historical knowledge of the county, the HCV program, and the clients, but also your personality and vibe you bring to the workplace every day. We wish you well as you transition into your next phase of life, taking some well-deserved time to relax, spend time with your grandchildren, and making pottery. Thank you for your service to the residents of Carroll County, Maryland. All yours.
Thank you. It's been a great time. I can't, I've always told people that if I stay at one job more than six to seven years, then that's probably going to be my lifetime job for the rest of my life. So, yeah, it's definitely been a ride, and I enjoyed every minute of it.
I'm so grateful to have had you. So I understand grandchildren and pottery next?
Yes. My grandchildren have been for a couple of years now, but yes, pottery. I was very, very heavy into it a few years back, and then when COVID came, of course, everything kind of shut down, and then I got lazy and kind of stopped doing shows. But, yeah, I'm going to try to find some, maybe, consignment shops to put my stuff out.
What kinds of work do you do? Pottery, in terms of pottery?
Anything and everything. I do wheel work. I also do slab work, make baking pans, and just about anything. If somebody comes to me and says, hey, can you make me like a tray to hold my business cards and things like that? And then I will. So I've made specialty pieces.
That is awesome. And it's not easy to do either. It takes some effort to learn the skill.
The wheel is very hard to learn. Yeah, you kind of got to have the knack for it, yeah. And my teacher told me right away, he said, oh, you'll do fine. You'll do great.
That's awesome. So any other words?
Just our words of appreciation. She is our historian. She has been with us for 21 years. She's been the go-to gal. She's done all our training. Her dedication to the job, her compassion and kindness to the people that we work with has been commendable. She will be greatly missed, but we hope she'll come back to volunteer.
Gentlemen, any thoughts?
Just greatly appreciate all your hard work and dedication, enjoy the time with the grandkids, and enjoy doing your pottery. Sounds like fun.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, you want to do a photo?
Sure. Well, we've got two more retirements. Sharon, come on up. Welcome, Sharon.
Thank you.
Sharon Meekins, in recognition of your service with Carroll County Government as a housing specialist since July 2019, you transitioned easily to county employment from the Carroll County Health Department's Collaboration for Homeless Enhancement Services Program, where you worked collaboratively with the county's efforts to stabilize people in housing and lift them out of homelessness. Your supervisors have shared your warmth, your warm ability to meet people where they are and truly understand them without judgment. Your joy in helping clients of the Housing Choice voucher program shines through with your easy laugh and quick smile. There it is. We thank you for your service to the residents of Carroll County, Maryland, and wish you a relaxing and healthy retirement. Thank you so much for everything you've done. So, welcome, Sharon.
Thank you. I've enjoyed this. I will miss this job. I will miss the coworkers. I will miss my tenants that I have. A lot of them have really became close and trust me. I guess with my case management in the past, has helped a lot of them get through a lot more things. But I definitely will miss this job. I will miss, he's got to be the best boss right next to me.
I didn't pay her anything.
He paid me 500. But they have got to be the best bosses to work for, and I will truly miss everyone, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for everything that you've done. So what comes next?
I'm going to take the summer off. I'm taking my grandkids and great-grandkids to the ocean for a week. Please play for me. For the ocean for a week, and then I'm going to, I'm going to get another part-time job. I'm not one to sit at home. I love community. I love doing stuff. But, yeah, I'll probably get a little part-time job. Lowe's, Home Depot, Wies.
Maybe Carroll County.
I was going to say, can we talk or is it coming back?
She keeps saying, volunteer, yeah. Medical's expensive, unfortunately. Yeah, that's pretty much it. Just going to relax. Do some things, but enjoy the summer. That's what I mainly want to do. Been working since I was 16, so, yeah. I'm going to take a summer. But thank you, guys. It's been great.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Picture?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we got one more certificate of recognition. Unfortunately, they are not attending today, but we are going to definitely recognize them. I think it speaks volumes. We've got three individuals today that we're recognizing, as we always have in the past, which is incredible, the amount of years and dedication we have from various employees over the years. So I have a certificate of recognition. This certificate is awarded to Angie I. Walls. In recognition of over 31 years of dedicated service to the clients of the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities since October of 1993, we celebrate your remarkable career. You began as a Resocialization Program A2 and will conclude your time with the county as the manager of the Mount Airy Senior Center. In your role as senior center manager, you supervise the operations and activities of the center, ensuring a safe, clean, and engaging environment for older and disabled adults. Your leadership, professionalism, and exceptional customer service will be greatly missed. We wish you the best in this transition to the next phase of your life, taking some well-deserved time to relax. Thank you for your service to the residents of Carroll County, and it is signed by all five of the Board of Carroll County Commissioners. And I'm going to set this aside, so we can make sure she gets that later.
Yeah, if I could make, if I could just take a moment to talk about Angie a little bit. Her departure definitely saddens me. I've gotten to know Angie really well, along with her staff, Dave and Ann, down at the Mount Airy Senior Center, and all the volunteers that volunteer there and give their time. Angie has done an amazing job. As a lot of people know, the Mount Airy Senior Center, much like the South Carroll Senior Center, it's extremely busy place, serving people from multiple counties. And Angie's been there, just with a smile on her face, to make that center a place where people just want to come to. Word spreads, and they get more and more folks there. I don't want to embarrass Angie, but I've got an anecdote. One of my favorite moments with her was when I, right after I got elected as District 4 Carroll County Commissioner, I went and stopped by the South Carroll Senior Center to say hi to everybody. And I walked in her office, and her printer had a big picture of me right on it, which I thought was odd, and I grabbed it. I said, you know, who's this guy? She goes, well, that's the new commissioner. And I said, okay, well, that's me. And she goes, well, I didn't even know what you looked like, so I had to have your picture someplace. So that was kind of a fortuitous moment, and we got a good laugh at that, and we still do. So Angie, I know, if you're, hopefully you're listening. I know a lot of your coworkers are listening. I know people all over Citizen Services are listening. You have been just a wonderful, wonderful person for this county, and you have done such an amazing job with the Mount Airy Senior Center, and you will be missed. So I just wanted to convey that to Angie, and hopefully she's listening, and thank you.
Do you guys want to say anything? Senior centers are some of our jewels in Carroll County and keeps everybody busy, not without controversy sometimes, but it's more positive than negative.
I have no idea what you're referring to.
Those are just Commissioner Kyler's senior centers.
I'm not going to comment on that. So we wish Angie was able to be here today, and we do believe that she is watching this morning. So thank you all for recognizing her, for your kind words. Commissioner Garren, you know, she has been a longtime staff member, dedicated, hardworking. The members love her. The center will not be the same without her. And we wish her so well in her future years and time to enjoy her retirements. We're hoping to celebrate her, you know, in the near future, and, you know, be making plans for that as well. But Rich has a few things to say.
Well, I'd like to start. Angie did send me a text this morning, and these are her words. "I am grateful for having been able to work for the county and for those who worked and supported me through the years. I feel very blessed." And I will just kind of build on that. I was very blessed to have, I have some great staff, and Angie certainly is one of those people. And, you know, Commissioner Garren brought up the story about, and I remember the story. She's very nervous, and she told me. And, but, you know... remember the story. She's very nervous. And she told me. And, but, you know, she has a very sharp, quick wit, and she even has a sharper and quicker intellect. It's wrapped up in a very caring, intuitive, and, you know, spirit. Her contributions to that center and its members are measurable over the years. And I wish her the very best, and I hope that she will visit and lets us know how much she's enjoying her well-earned retirement and making the rest of us a little jealous in the process. But also, you know, we will, she will be back when she's able to travel, and we will recognize her at the center. And as soon as we know when that will be, we'll be letting people know that. So, thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you for those kind words. I'm sure they, they meant a great deal to her. And I do think she is watching today, so.
If I just add twofold. One, I really wish the cameraman and reports, whoever was here earlier, was here right now, because this is what the county is. It's people and it's community. And, you know, the service that she, along with all the others in senior centers, do and provide, I mean, it's thousands and people of our community. And that's what, you know, unfortunately, the cameraman was focused on an issue. We have lots of issues, but most importantly, it's, it's people. And the second is, I took the opportunity to crash a party in Piney a couple weeks ago, I think it was, and the picnic. And it was, the Citizen Services had a picnic. And the, the community that you provide, you know, with each other, I mean, it's just, it, it was awesome, you know. You know, sitting with one group, but just seeing everyone engaged and involved. You, you do it right. And you've heard me say this, it starts with the leadership. And it just, you, you see it go down from leaders that want to be with each other, you know, then the teams underneath those leaders say, well, that's pretty cool. I want to be with, you know, you too. And that's what that was, was one big family, you know, in Citizen Services showed and displayed under that pavilion. So thanks for allowing me to be there. And just again, it's a, it's a testament to your workforce and folks like Angie that's been there so long. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
And thank you, guys. And, and like most of the county, you have a slimmer workforce than you'd probably prefer to have. They work hard. And, and they work hard to accommodate everybody in the community that wants to come there. And it's, it's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, now we get to the fun stuff. A public hearing for amendments to Carroll County Pension Plan. Do you have anything legal to tell us about a public hearing?
Yes, this is a public hearing, the purpose of which is to elicit public comment on some proposed amendments to Chapter 35, which is our pension and retirement section. Specifically, it concerns our public safety pension plan. This was advertised in the Carroll County Times on June 12, 2025, and Thursday, June 19, 2025. With us to talk about the proposal briefly is our Director Kristi Brickley Bixler from HR, as well as.
Robin Huffer.
Robin, I know Robin.
And Carrie Myatt.
Yes, yes.
Our retirements coordinator. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. Do we have any public comment either on the phone or, or here?
I do. I have three.
Would you prefer to give your presentation and not them speak, or do you want to hear them first?
So my presentation goes through the amendments that we made, the revised edits. I do want to apologize. I had a little snafu with my computer and thought the PowerPoint came, went to Chris yesterday, so you don't have copies. So we do have them on the screen here. If it's okay, we'll go through them. It looks like a lot, but it, it really is just general cleaning up of, of the language and making sure it, it indicates what, what you had asked. So if it's all right, we'll start with Article 1, the plan establishment and definitions. So per your prior instruction in our discussions, the plan is being amended to change the benefit multiplier effective with the June 30, 2025 date to 2.5%. And to make other changes also effective July 1, 2025. The next items are in our definitions area. The first is in regards to compensation, and that is in regards to clarifying language for our Department of Fire and EMS. Due to their 24-hour schedule, we had to add some additional language in here with regards to how we're collecting the contribution from, from them for their pension. So that's the language there. The next one is in regards to a covered individual definition. When we made the edits to Chapter 36 and, and Chapter 37, which primarily ties to the Department of Fire and EMS, we indicated that a benefit-eligible employee was someone who worked at least 25, 24 hours a week. It was previously 18.75, so this is just correcting the calculation there. 1,248 is 24 hours a week times 52 weeks in the year. And again, the effective date of the plan changes is July 1, 2025. Next is an excluded employee, ties into the definition of a benefit-eligible employee, and again, correcting the hours there. And the next one is in regards to the per-pay compensation, which again, clarifies how we're collecting the contributions for the pension from the Department of Fire and EMS with their 24-hour schedules. We also adjusted the calculations to reflect a 40-hour work week and 2,080 hours annually. There were some examples in the plan document that, that used 37 and 1/2 hour a week. So we corrected that to 40, as most of our employees with a, a small handful only working 37 and 1/2, the 40 hours per week was more applicable to them. The next few are in regards to specific language throughout the plan summary. I certainly won't go through and, and read these to you word for word, but the content is to indicate that as of July 1, 2025, the multiplier rate will be increased to the 2.5%. So that, that's this for transferred and military service credit from other Maryland Public Safety Retirement Plans is the first area that that shows up. Next, we deleted under provisions of Section 3.4, transferred and military service credit. We did not make up these amendments ourselves. We worked with our pension attorney, and she indicated it to us as we were going through the document that this law changed in regards to how we look at pension from other government entities for transferred and military service credit. So we removed this language so that it was not something that we had to continue to go to other government employer plans, try to get information on what somebody would have been eligible for, deduct that from what they're eligible for here, because they're, if they transfer in the service, then we're taking that into account when we're doing their calculations. So she had indicated this could be removed from the plan summary. Again, credit for military service, same as, as we had shown before. This is for someone who wishes to receive credit for military service that they've given. They can receive up to a maximum of five years, provided that he or she earns 10 years of credible service here at Carroll County Government. This is clarifying that any service counted, credited on or after July 1, 2025 would be credited at the 2.5 multiplier. And this is applicable to only those that, that ask to have that service credit applied to their pension. The next one, again, purchase of service credit for individuals not tied to the military. Individuals can request to purchase credit. This is clarifying that prior to July 1, 2025, we would look at the multipliers that were in place at that time. For service credit after July 1, 2025, we would look at the 2.5 multiplier. The next page is for purchase of service credit at the 1.2 multiplier and cost of purchase of service credit. Again, this is removing the prior multiplier of 1.2 and indicating that the purchase of, of service credit would be at the 2.5%, taking that 1.2% multiplier out of, out of the plan guidelines.
That 7% per year, does that, has that changed?
Seven percent?
Yeah, yeah. Go back. Present value will be determined using the interest at a rate of 7% per year.
Oh, I see that there. I'm sorry.
When was the last time that was changed? And just.
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to look back.
More, just curiosity.
Okay.
At this point. Just because of where interest rates are and how things have kind of moved around, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but not to affect this, but yeah.
All right. Article 4 is in regards to the contributions. Again, a change that we had talked about was an increase in the contribution from 8% to 9%. So this is clarifying that.
You said 8 to 9?
From 8% to 9%. So anything, 2009 until June 30, 2025 would be at 8%, and then it's July 1, 2025 at 9%. Also, in, in regards to participant contributions, some reference to sec, another section of, of the policy, and the change from the maximum annual benefit from 60% to 75%. That is in regards to the 2.5 multiplier, and that was all part of the actuarial review that was done when we assessed the costs of making these changes. So that's why it was changed to 75%. The next section there is credible service earned on or after October 1, 2009 and prior to July 1, 2025. So this plan has had a multiplier change several times over the past several years. This is just clarifying how we're going to handle that time prior to July 1, 2025. It does require us to do different calculations based on that multiplier. So again, this is just clarifying that it'll be the, the 2.5% and how those calculations will be made for the credible service. The next few pages are in regards to the disability benefits. At your, your request, we adjusted the benefit to 66 and 2/3. You may recall there was language in the prior plan that defined catastrophic and non-catastrophic. So we clarified the language to just speak to a, a line of duty disability. And what that all entails is, is on the next page there. Took away the language regarding catastrophic and non-catastrophic. And then on, on the last page was just cleaning up some of the, the wording there on that. And the last change that we have is more of an administrative change as opposed to one that, that you had asked for. This was in regards to the IRS threshold changing. So when someone leaves county employment and does not have enough time to be vested into the plan, we have been holding their funds. We have allowed them to stay in the county plan. This was a change in the IRS that anyone who has an accrued benefit more than $1,000, but did not, does not exceed $7,000, that we can ask them, we can actually roll that over into an IRA for them, rather than keeping that into the pension plan. So this was a recent change. Another one of those things that, that the pension attorney had taken a look at and recommended that we, we put in here as a change. So before I finish up, I'll just say that we, next steps on this, if approved, would be to obviously finish the updates to the, the plan summary or into the plan document with these edits. Also, update our plan summary. Make sure that we have information correct for our new hires going forward. And then we will make some documentation that will help employees hopefully be able to calculate at their, on their own, how they can get to the information regarding their pension. We are working to implement pension statements for all employees, but that's down the road a little bit after we do this year's valuation. So we've gotten some calls in anticipation of this. What's my pension going to be? What does it look like? How much is it going to change? So in order to, to help employees be able to figure that out on their own, we want to be able to give them a template that they can follow and hopefully make those calculations as close to an estimate, a good estimate as they can. So that's in our next steps, as well as starting to work on the drop plan. So we have a meeting scheduled with the sheriff in the, in the upcoming weeks and, and look forward to starting discussions on that and bringing that forward in the next couple months for you to take a look at.
Thank you very much.
So, so will that have to be another revision of 35?
Yes. You'll see me again.
Have any further questions?
Commissioners have any questions or comments, and then we'll open it up to public comment. So none?
I just appreciate all the hard work that you all put into this. I know it was done in a pretty quickly, quick, timely fashion.
And we have no callers, correct?
That's correct, sir. We did have one caller. If the caller's listening, please call back in. We tried to put them in a breakout room, and they'd hang up every time.
Okay. We'll holler if you get someone.
Okay, our first speaker is Michael Carolenko. Heard he's singing at Reese tomorrow night.
Yes, the trailer, if you saw it, it's up on the, I guess, the east side of the property there. I'll be there. I think it's at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So I'm Michael Carolenko. I am a proud resident of the county and the president of the Carroll County Professional Firefighters and Paramedics Association. It's hopefully a little bit easier to stand up here and be so positive about something moving forward. These three additions, specifically the 66 and 2/3, the multiplier, and the drop, represent, I'd say, a major piece in the puzzle of supporting recruitment retention. It's a sustainable and effective public safety, specifically, you know, for fire and EMS on my side. I'm sure all the uniforms behind me will speak on their behalf. But on behalf of all of our members, the vast majority of the, the ranks and file of fire and EMS, you know, we really stepped forward and hopefully made a clear statement with the additional percentage of contribution on our side to say, well, we support this. We see it as a majorly important investment. And I think that it's just also to, I, I guess, invest in our own way to make sure that this is a, a solid plan moving forward. You know, I was, is happy to see with a $2 million that was already before in FY '25, you know, that this wasn't something that we, you know, we're going to have to drastically adjust for, but at the same time, that, that 1% definitely put the county in a much better leverage position. And, you know, leading to this point right now, I look forward to the conversation. But I really want to thank you for your investment in this, your support for it and moving it forward and really seeing the, the benefit moving down the line as our guys start moving forward, that retirement date, obviously a lot longer away than the, the guy sitting behind me there. But thank you very much. And I think that's a record for me. So I give you that time back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sheriff Dewis.
Morning.
Morning.
As you can see, it's a pretty important issue. I've got a number of folks that are here to support it. I do have a statement. I want to thank the five of you for making first responders a priority, the men and women each and every day that put their lives on the line in this county. If government expects first responders to put their lives on the line day in and day out, then government should be willing to take care of first responders should they sustain a catastrophic injury that forces them to retire from this profession or worse, injures them so severely they can never work any job. Or if they make the ultimate sacrifice and die in the line of duty, their families should receive the support of government for the sacrifice that their loved one made. And the same holds true for our military men and women. Just to remind everyone about how we got here. In January of 2016, Corporal Brant Webb was patrolling the southern end of Carroll County on Maryland Route 26, just east of Frederick County. In the early morning hours, a car coming east on Route 26 at over 90 miles per hour slammed into Corporal Webb's patrol vehicle intentionally, nearly killing him and the driver of the other vehicle. Corporal Webb was hit so hard that the front bumper of his patrol vehicle was pushed into his lap. All of his toes on his right foot were pushed completely into his foot. He had to be sedated and immobilized when he got to shock trauma, so doctors could pull his toes from his foot individually to reset them. his toes from his foot individually to reset them. I know this because I witnessed this when I got to shock trauma just after the crash. Can you imagine looking down at your feet and not seeing any toes only to realize they're completely recessed inside your foot and needed to be pulled out? He lost one of those toes and the others needed to be fused. This was the least of his physical injuries, not to mention the emotional scar it left on his life. On January 27th, 2016, at approximately 1:40 a.m., Corporal Webb's career ended. I'm holding a picture of Corporal Webb's patrol vehicle when it was struck that night. Some of you have never seen this. It's barely recognizable. This damage is purely from the result of the crash, it had nothing to do with extracting him from the vehicle. Corporal Webb never fully rehabilitated to the point where he could come back as a patrol deputy, a job he loved. Corporal Webb did retire several years later under current disability system that we are now enhancing. This crash completely altered the course of his life. But it wasn't until this crash that we realized the deficiencies in the disability retirement for deputies catastrophically injured in the line of duty. Over the last nearly decade, as this county sheriff, I, along with the Fraternal Order of Police and three separate boards of commissioners, have worked tirelessly to fund and rectify the inadequacies of this retirement system, specifically when it comes to a catastrophic injury or loss of life. With this vote today, Corporal Webb will receive the full 66 and 2/3% of his salary that he deserves. This will also put our pension system in line with the industry standard that every other law enforcement officer in Carroll County and most throughout the state are afforded should they receive a similar injury. Corporal Webb has never complained for one second and only ever worked relentlessly to come back so that he could be a patrol deputy in this county. Unfortunately, his career ended on that tragic day. I encourage each of you to vote in favor of this enhancement. I want to thank the five of you and the previous board, including Commissioners Weaver, Commissioners Wance, Commissioner Rothstein and Commissioner Frazier. The enhancements beyond the disability will help this office, including fire and EMS with recruiting and retaining quality individuals that know the community cares about the risks they take and is willing to recognize their sacrifices. Finally, I also want to thank Lieutenant, and actually I just promoted Brandon, he's a captain now, Captain Brandon Holland, Master Deputy Ashley Owens, Sergeant Ross Torongio, Kristy Bixler and her staff, Roberta Wyndham and Mr. Zaleski for their efforts over the years to make sure that this is now a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, and I need to thank Mr. Carolenko for being so short and delegating your extra time to the sheriff.
Hey, next we have Ash Owens.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ash Owens, President of the Carroll County FOP. First, I want to thank you all for getting us to this point where we've had these discussions and HR is sitting here after this presentation today. It's been a long time coming, so thank you for the efforts that you all have put forth on this board over the last several years. As the sheriff mentioned, there was a point in time where we, and if fire and EMS was a part of the county professionally for that period of time, they also would not have had the disability of 66 and 2/3. In fact, we had nothing. It was if you got disabled and you couldn't come back to work, you lost your job. It was harsh, some of that was growing pains with a county that was taking on a police force for the first time in 2011, so we recognize that. So we've worked hard with the leadership of the county since that time to come up with and make the changes. And as the sheriff said, the previous board, I commend them for the changes that they made in 2020, but it was an eye-opener what happened to Brant Webb. I was working that night, I was one of the people that tried to find him and responded to the accident, the crash, not an accident, it was on purpose. So those pictures that he showed are forever ingrained in my mind, but it's not about me, it's about the experience that Corporal Webb had and continues to have, he had his career taken from him. So I hope that that never happens to anybody else, whether it's one of us in uniform or one of the members of fire and EMS. My voice is shaky because it means a lot to me. It gets me emotional because it takes me back to that night, because that was a very emotional time for our whole agency. So I commend you for getting us to this point. I look forward to you all voting on this in just a few minutes and I urge you to vote favorably for it. But I want to thank Kristy and her team as well, a lot of unheralded behind the scenes work that I know that takes place and you all from the actuary studies to the meetings, to the presentations, to actually putting all the work together, working with attorneys, which I think something that people don't even realize has to happen when in ordinance or something like that has changed. So I commend Kristy and her team for the work that they did to put all this together. So that's all for me, but I'm just very grateful, our membership is very grateful, we're just very appreciative of you all, past boards, but especially you all, the work that you've made to make this a priority and recognize that that's a benefit that needed to happen for the county to move forward and be progressive, so thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. So I don't know if Commissioners have any more comments or questions, and our choice is to leave the record open for 10 days or close the public hearing and make a decision today. And we're okay with either choice.
Correct.
Yeah, I tell you, sometimes you just wish government moved faster than it does in making decisions. I do applaud my colleagues, both past and present, to get us where we are today. We were on the glide path getting here, but it just, it takes a while. You know, again, my comment holds, just like the last one was, I wish this is where the cameras were, because this is the story for the week is about people. And this is a way that we can take care of our community that takes care of our community. And that's the messaging that unfortunately, when cameras come for a specific issue and they walk away, we gotta applaud everyone for being here and doing this, because it's, all the men and women in red, blue and support our community deserve not just our utmost respect, but our resources that we can provide. And that's where, Kristy, we were able to accomplish through a lot of hard work. So congratulations on your work and your team getting us to where we are. Thank you to the men and women in red and blue for keeping the momentum going on the glide path to get us where we are today, so that's all.
So I'll definitely associate myself with all of Commissioner Rothstein's very well-stated comments. You know, for me, this is, this factors into a couple of different things. I mean, obviously I'm in support of this and I will be voting for this. You know, it's a way for us as commissioners, as elected officials, to be able to demonstrate our support of the men and women who take care of us, as Commissioner Rothstein said. And at a time when, you know, New York City, for example, one of their primaries, the mayororal primary, they just nominated somebody who wants to abolish the police department, who wants to defund the police department. And so we do things differently in this county, we support our law enforcement, and, you know, as Commissioner Rothstein and the sheriff had said, this has been a long time coming and I'm glad we are finally at the point where we can make it happen. You know, it really does matter and it really is a way for us to be able to demonstrate our respect for what you do. And so, yeah, I will be, I will certainly be voting for this.
Just to be really brief here, I do, couldn't agree more with Commissioner Rothstein's comments about both the current board and the previous board, and I think this is something that we all can definitely agree on, it's been a long time coming. And, you know, to hear not only the comments this morning from public comment, but to also see the photo is something to witness. But, you know, we've also got something else I think sometimes we might forget about, not those that serve, but some other people may, it's the families that are connected to those people. Because those individuals, whether, when they're harmed and they can no longer, can no longer be employed or work, what does that do to the family structure as well? It's not just the fact that they've been harmed or injured on the job, but then what is the long-term situation that we see there? So just want to thank my four colleagues, for all of us in the previous board's support to move this along, and I'm glad that we are closing the gap on this.
Let's do it.
And I want to thank the crowd that came and the public comments that we got, and it's nice to see the room full and not upset about something, there for something, and that's nice to see friendly faces.
Give it a minute.
You'll be back, you'll be back.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners, close this hearing, the record and adopt the amendments to Carroll County Pension Plan Incorporated by Reference in Code of Public Local Laws and Ordinances of Carroll County, Chapter 35, Personnel, Pensions and Retirement Sections, 35 Tax 60, Carroll County Public Safety Pension Plan.
Second. Our motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
Thank you for the support here.
Now the room will empty.
And as some people exit, our next item will be proposed use for Not in Carroll funding.
Morning.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So in your FY26 budget, you approved some funding for Not in Carroll that's part for collaboration between county government and the health department and some services that have been in place for about seven years when, at the time, it was called the opioid senior policy group, I can't remember what it's, what the name is.
Overdose Prevention Policy Group.
It's been changed to now, but that group identified the two things we were really lacking in Carroll County was substantial prevention programming to try to stop the pipeline of new, I guess addicted people that we were seeing that just kept growing and growing. So that was one piece we were seeing. The other piece was we had no crisis services in Carroll County at the time, so we came to the board at that time and the board approved some funding. So, like I said, this has been approved in the FY26 budget, want to kind of try to keep it brief, but what we're asking you to do is to approve how we're going to spend the money as far as how it's going to be allocated to the programs that we have planned with this. And just briefly gonna, I'm going to mention briefly something about the Boys and Girls Club and then Aaron Bishop's going to talk to you about what's happening there and some of the changes they've seen and things of that nature. And then Kathy Baker and some of her staff, Marie Lydic and Veronica Dietz, and I saw Sean was in the back, but I guess he had the, oh, Sean Davis from Boys and Girls Clubs also here are going to talk, but they're gonna, the health department's going to talk about the mobile crisis team. I just wanted to say with the Boys and Girls Club, I think with their mentorship program and all that, it's doing a wonderful job for us as far as what we're seeing with their survey results and things of that nature. They're going to be able to touch all the middle schools starting next year. It's, I kind of think what we envisioned, they're bringing a lot of other resources to the table. There's no way that the funding that the county provides would touch all of the middle schools in the county, but they've got other grant funding and philanthropic donations and all that, and I just like how all the funding's kind of braided together to be able to impact us countywide and have a good program to essentially do some prevention at that middle school level. So we'll start with the Boys and Girls Club and Aaron, if you want to give a little bit of an update about that.
So we have had an amazing year this year at Boys and Girls Club. I want to thank you guys for your continued support of our programming because we really are making a difference and especially with middle school youth in the county at such a critical age for kids, to make sure that they're getting that mentorship and that guidance. Through the middle school after-school program funding, we served 255 kids this year. Boys and Girls Clubs of Carroll County overall served close to 1,000 kids last year, so that's really great news. But from the middle school program, we saw our biggest growth at Northwest Middle School. And that's been a county area that we've really been nurturing for a long time. And when we started this program years ago, we said that we would max each one of those middle school sites at 50 and that worked with the funding and the staffing. This year, we pushed Northwest to 60 kids because we had kids that kept wanting to join and nobody wants to say no to a middle school that wants, middle schooler that wants to do something positive. So that was a huge growth area for us. We opened the North Carroll Clubhouse this year and we added Shiloh to our group. We anticipated that we'd probably see 100 kids in that group and we far exceeded that with 123 at that program and that's still growing. We served close to 16,000 meals. We had our sites together perform 6,579 service hours for the kids, so they did a service project in their community each month. So I think that's really important to teaching that integrity and that character. One of the things I wanted to kind of touch on, because I think it goes with that leadership piece, is the academics. We're supporting them because when they're doing well in school, then that helps them overall. And again, I want to talk about Northwest because that's a program that just really excelled this year. We had 80% of our kids at Northwest that passed math with a B or better and 90% that passed English and language arts with a B or better. And B is big, you know, these are the kids that sometimes when we first saw them, were barely passing with Ds. So we've made huge strides. Northwest, I do have to say, 90% of all of their kids passed all of their classes with a B or better. So we are definitely seeing huge strides. But when we talk about youth advocacy, it's about empowering them. It's empowering them to make good decisions and it's empowering them to learn. And we did, of course, some surveying in the drug and alcohol survey and what we saw, just a couple of highlights from that, 94% of kids said that they can say no to peer pressure when it involves drug or alcohol. 88% of our kids said that they can encourage their friends to avoid using drug and alcohol. And 98% believe that they are responsible for their own decisions when they're with their friends. We also did a lot of work with social and emotional wellness and with this new positive action program that we ran in conjunction with the state of Maryland. And what we found was that we had a 13% increase in social skills among the kids, we had a 12.5% increase in integrity and responsibility, a 5% increase in self-management and a 9% increase in self-honesty. So that's huge. I mean, and that's what we're trying to do, so we're really, really pleased with that. Ed, do you want me to talk about the expansion as well?
Yeah, so go ahead and talk about the changes we're anticipating for next year.
So one of the challenges that we've seen is some of our growth at the Mount Airy site. Some of that is because Mount Airy is such a geographically diverse area, kids live very far from the school and a lot of times parents aren't really anxious to drive all the way across the county again to pick their kids up. So we have seen our numbers at Mount Airy not be quite as high as we would like them to be. So we've had some meetings, both with the local management board and the principal at Mount Airy Middle School, and we're going to reimagine our programming at Mount Airy next year. So instead of doing that traditional two-day-a-week after-school program that we do at the other schools, we're going to kind of transition Mount Airy more to a workshop-type program where we can really kind of focus on the school as a whole. So what we'll be doing is we'll be running monthly workshops there, we'll be working with the school administration to see what their initiatives are so we can kind of like, you know, couple together with them. So we'll be running things like we might run a technology workshop one, and we might run a life skills workshop the next month, and we might run more of an art-based workshop the next month. But all things that are going to base, be based in these skills that we're trying to teach, but so that we can see more kids but maybe less frequently. And we think that that's going to be a better way to serve the community. We're also going to work on quarterly workshops with parents in Mount Airy as well, so maybe a book club for moms and daughters, a career workshop for parents, so things to try to get that community a little more engaged. That also allows us to expand to Oklahoma Road Middle School, so we're so excited. We've been meeting with Jamie Carver, we've worked with him for a long time when he was at East Middle. And so in the fall, we're going to start a program at Orem's and that will ensure that we have a program at every single middle school in the county.
And I guess I just want to speak to the Mount Airy thing, we've been having a lot of discussions about it. I know Boys and Girls Clubs work very hard there to try to recruit kids to be members of the club and I think we're finding that a lot of the kids identify with activities that are happening in Frederick and whatnot. that are happened, happening in Frederick and whatnot, and, and we've really just had a hard time getting the numbers up. And we didn't want to step away from that school, so this reimagining gives us an opportunity to try to engage more kids there, and make better use of, of staffing, so that we can still serve the school and, and, and not necessarily have a, have more resources there for, 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 for lack of kids that are showing, showing up for the two-day-a-week program.
I think it's a more responsible use of funds. We're also going to work with the school, so we're actually going to go in during the school day, on some of the technology that we have that the school doesn't have. We have a program called Transfer VR, it's drones, I mean, I'm sorry, it's VR headsets that has, you know, virtual 3D career exploration. And so, we're going to go in and work with the career coaches there and let them use our software. So, there'll be a lot more integration with the school, so I think it's actually going to be a really great, a great way to reimagine that program.
So, do any of you have questions for Erin or Sean? Because we're going to kind of make a transition and let the Health Department come up and talk about the, the Mobile Crisis Team, if you don't have any questions for Erin or Sean.
Just one quick comment. It's, it's so amazing what you guys do, and so much with mental and personal health, that some of it is because of the other things you do, but, and, and then I've got to ask, most of us have been to some of your events, do you teach cheerleading, or are they just that happy? Every time you talk, I think of 50 kids are going to start applauding and cheering.
We actually have a cheer club, so.
We do. You can imagine that we can start a club.
No, because I was going to say pretty much the same thing. Commissioner Gordon, Kyler and I were at the awards ceremony, right?
You saw the award ceremony?
Oh, my gosh. The amount of energy in a room, it, it was definitely off the charts, but the, the impact of the stories that were being told, the video of the kid that was talking, it, it was just so impactful. I, I did, I left there just motivated, inspired, we're doing something right, you know? And, we as you and our community, because that was, one, it was a packed house, you know? So, I'm not sure where you're going to go next year, but it seems like it just keeps getting bigger and bigger, but, once you got over the noise, and you weren't deafened by the noise, and it was just so positive, and something I'm going to maintain in, in my, you know, spirits for quite a while, because it was definitely pretty cool, I mean.
No, it was, it was, you're absolutely right. I mean, it's just truly remarkable to see that level of enthusiasm by everybody, whether they received an award or not, everybody was celebrating everybody. And I thought to myself, and I think we all do at times, how do we bottle this up?
Gee.
Get it outside the building to the rest of the public? But, you guys do such a remarkable work in the community, and just want to thank you for that.
We appreciate it, and it speaks to the culture, and, you know, that we have going on, and we've been able to carry the momentum forward. Erin mentioned, we, we served a little over 900 kids this past year, next year will be 1,000. So, I'm getting ready to do more work over at North Carroll with the federal earmark money, we're starting to put that into play, and hopefully we'll be drilling down elementary soon there, too. And, I just don't want to point out that, you know, we do serve at these community impact sites two days a week, but on Friday nights, when we have teen nights, kids from all over the county come and participate, so they have something to do on a, on a Friday night, when kids get bored and go looking for stuff to do, so.
I mean, 16,000 meals is such a large number, and, and, you know, it's, it's one of those, it's a challenge to think we need that to do, but we're so blessed that you're there to do it, because that's just incredible number. I mean, we're, we're not going to do away with, you know, drugs, and we're not going to do away with kids that are hungry, but we have programs like yours that are so impactful that they're able to get fed, and to say no, and walk away, and the empowerment, so, yeah, very...
And to know that somebody believes in them, and someone's watching and checking and, you know, affirming them when they do something wrong.
So powerful, but thank you.
And Sean said this to me before, but I want you guys to know that if it weren't for the support of the Commissioners, I don't think the Boys and Girls Club would have gone as far as fast as they have gone in, in reaching the other areas in the county that are not in Westminster. So, that's the impact of what you're doing here.
That's a good point. You truly are the Boys and Girls Club of Carroll County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we made that a...
I'm so happy when that, that name's stuck, you know?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and 70% over the past three years, our membership's grown, and, you know, thanks to, thanks to your support, so we appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Can we talk about the Dunk Tank next time we're here?
You noticed he was looking at you when he said that?
Well, he's already done it, he's alumni.
They are so contagious. My opponent and I have now become good friends because of that event, so, thank you.
Well, they've gotten two out of the five of us so far.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll take a minute just to say, today will be my last official Commissioners' meeting. I actually officially retire tomorrow, well, actually Monday, but my last day of work is tomorrow, so. I want to thank you all for all of your support throughout my career, and the time that you've been on the board. I really do appreciate you showing up at activities and supporting us as we come before you, so.
How many years?
How many years? Well, I've been in this position for three, but I've worked for the state for 42 years, so. I started when I was 17, I was a baby, right out of high school. So, anyway, we're here before you to talk about the Not in Carroll money for the support of Mobile Crisis. And as you know, this is kind of a critical thing we've done in the community, and it really has made a difference, and we would like to continue to grow that, if possible, in the future. But, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the interim director, in taking over my position effective Monday, will be Marie Lydic, and Veronica Dietz, who's currently the Crisis Director, so.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
We are coming and again asking for your continued support towards our Mobile Crisis Initiative. The County Commissioners have offered and funded our call center at, I think it's 135,000, but Celine reminded me not to shortchange that there is a little bit of an increase this year, so she's got those numbers in your documents. But, to keep you guys updated on what's been going on, you, you have numbers about what's, what the call center has done over the last fiscal year. So, they fielded just about 1,500 calls, incoming and outgoing. And how the call center works for our Mobile Crisis Initiative is that a person can call our local, our local Mobile Crisis Team through the 410-952-9552 number, or they can call 988. And during the hours that our Mobile Crisis Team is available, those calls go directly to our call operations. Those individuals are trained crisis phone counselors, who can do triage, provide resources, help link individuals to community resources, and, when needed, dispatch our Mobile Crisis Team. So, they serve a critical kind of first-touch point for any individual in our community who's experiencing a crisis. So, last year, last fiscal year, they served, conducting 1,500 phone calls, and we're on track to do that and a little bit more this year, as we're just under 1,500 at, as of the end of May. So, we really are continuing to meet the need. The State of Maryland really began to make a push over the last several years to really expand out and enhance crisis services. And this goes hand-in-hand with enhancing public safety in our community, because if folks can call someone that can come out and meet their mental health need, that frees up our law enforcement or other first responders to really focus on public safety challenges and public safety issues. So, we'd like to continue to free up our, our first responders to do the work of keeping our communities safe, while also providing individuals in our community who are experiencing a crisis, someone to speak with, someone to respond, places that they can go to receive services and support. So, we would ask that you would continue to fund that call center for, for our initiative. As you know, we use multiple pots of money braided together to fund this, and last year's award, last year's money, made up 22% of our total funding for our Mobile Crisis Budget. So, thank you, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
You, you said that very well. Braided is a, is an interesting word to use, and, yeah, I, I appreciate the way you shared that and the message you shared. You know, I've been dealing with behavioral health for a long, long, long time, decades, and it took a long time for, you know, me to step up and stop and then step up, and people getting involved. So, I'm a, not just an advocate, but someone who deals with it appropriately, and knowing that there's resources like you collectively out there, make a difference. I mean, again, this is what Carroll County is about, and this is what our community is about. Whether it's regarding someone like me as a veteran, or Ed as a veteran, I mean, or, you know, or just anyone that's out there, need to know that you're there. Kathy, you're going to be missed, you know? And afterwards, I do have a coin for you, just to remember, you know, us, but, just thank you. And, yeah, again, drugs and unfortunate things are going to still be there. What we're doing is minimizing it, is mitigating, is stepping in the middle of it, and not being afraid to. And, that's what the behavioral health is all about. So, I applaud it, and you, again, you said it very, very well, so, thanks.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY26 Not in Carroll funding to continue the Mobile Crisis Team's call center to be paid through the contract with the Carroll County Health Department, and to continue after-school programs to be paid through the Carroll County Government contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
Now, we're going to talk about program, program open space allocations to the municipalities.
Do we have Cory here today?
Good morning, you both.
Morning.
Morning.
So, this fiscal year's allocation to the department from program open space is $691,000. And, as you know, 25% of this allocation gets distributed to municipalities on a rotating basis. That 25% equates to $172,000. And Ashley's here to give you a quick breakdown of where the, what towns are getting the money and what projects they are doing.
Okay, so, the four towns that will be getting money in fiscal year '26 will be Westminster, Union Bridge, New Windsor, and Tontytown, and they will get about $43,000 each. Westminster will be doing improvements to a pavilion at Wake, Wakefield Valley Park. Union Bridge will be doing a renovation at the Union Bridge Community Center on some tennis, tennis courts. And then, New Windsor will, will be doing some improvements on a pavilion at Maple Avenue Lions Club Park. And then, Tontytown will be actually putting this money towards a large project, expansion project at Tontytown Memorial Park.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the local chapter of the Maryland Municipal League for FY 2026 municipal program open space projects.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not going to have to go far.
I know.
Now, approval to submit and accept an award for a grant for a Maryland facade improvement program from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development.
Morning, you both.
Good morning. I'm here with Claire Stewart from our Bureau of Comprehensive Planning, seeking your approval to submit the application and accept the award for a facade improvement program grant. So, I'll turn it over to Claire to give you a little description about what that is and how it will be used.
Hey, good morning.
Morning.
The grant funds we are applying for from the state will be used to partially fund the Finksburg Facade Improvement Program. The total program budget for this cycle is $104,486. That's 80,000 in, in a grant request from the state, 20,000 participant match, and then a little under $5,000 in-kind match for staff time to administer the program. This is the fourth year that this program has been running. We offer grant funds to eligible property owners along the Finksburg corridor to improve the appearances of building facades and signage. The program is an 80/20, meaning the property or business owner is required to provide that 20% match. It's offered on a rolling two-year basis as funds are available. On the map you see on your screen, the eligible properties are highlighted in blue. Those are properties that are fronting Maryland 140 or adjacent to a property that fronts 140, visible from that corridor and within the sustainable community boundary, which is that red line. We can incentivize, incentivize property owners to make improvements by pairing this program with Economic Development's Gateway Renovation Tax Credit Program. Comp Planning administers the facade program, and as previously stated, we've estimated a little under 5,000 for that in-kind contribution for staff to administer it. And then, we also partner with the Finksburg Planning and Citizens Council to implement the program. They are instrumental in establishing guidelines for it, reviewing, and helping us market the program. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions I can answer?
Are there any commercial businesses that are not eligible for this?
In the sustainable community, yes. The, the goal of the program is to improve the appearance of that corridor, so if you're not visible from 140, you're not eligible for the program.
Okay. And then, the FPACC, is that a nonprofit?
It is.
It is, okay. So, could they provide funds, or is it have to be, I mean, does it matter where the funds are coming from? Is it like, can, can a nonprofit provide them, or does it have to be the store owner?
Right, the, right, it has to be the property owner, or the business owner.
Okay, okay, cool.
More discussion? I move the Board of County Commissioners approve the submission, acceptance of the fiscal year '26 Maryland Facade Improvement Program Grant Application and Award.
Second.
I have a motion and a couple seconds, all those, well, any more discussion?
Couple more seconds, you'd have an hour.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just leaving it alone.
Yeah, yeah. I don't blame you.
Wow.
Thank you.
I thought that was pretty good.
Thank you.
No.
Now, we're going to discuss the Carroll County Farm Museum caretaker, caretaker position.
Good morning to you both.
Morning.
Good morning, Denise Beaver, Director of Economic Development, and I have Jane Soul, Manager of the Carroll County Farm Museum, here. We're here to give you an update and briefing and discuss a possible decision for Carroll County Farm Museum caretaker position. So, as you know, the Carroll County Farm Museum has had a caretaker that has lived on-site for over 24-plus years. In April, that gentleman left the second-floor Alm's House apartment to live elsewhere, so we've had a vacancy with an on-site caretaker there since, since that time. We had to go into the apartment and make some evaluation of the livability of it, and do some renovations, which are currently undergoing right now. We've also been talking with Administration, Administrator Roberta Wyndham and Christie, and Human Resources, as well as the Comptroller's Office, to reevaluate that caretaker's position. And, based on those discussions, it was determined that the duties and responsibilities fall more in line with an employee status, and not as an independent contractor, which is the way we had handled it in the past. So, we have developed a job description for a part-time, up to 25-hour position that would require on-site, living in the apartment, and all of the other duties that we have come to expect and require of the caretaker, which would be opening and closing of the farm museum, as well... farm museum, as well as feeding the animals on the weekends, and attendance at special events, and being there, like, at weddings, you know, and other contract events that we have at the museum. And so that's where we are. We recognize that this is a new position that has come about at a time when the budget has already been decided, which, you know, is just an unfortunate timing situation. But we do feel that it is an important position for the security and safety of the property and the animals that are there, to have someone living on-site. So we're here today to bring that to you. We have consulted with budget and HR about it. They have determined that it would be an entry-level position at $15 an hour, which would, it would be a contractual position, and up to 25 hours, as I said, so no benefits. They would also enter into a lease with the county for the apartment, and the cost of the part-time contractual position could run about $21,000 a year, which, as I said, it's not something that we have in the budget currently. Budget thinks that there may be some wiggle room there, but it would take away from other things that are allocated in the budget to spend. So really, you know, it might be something that you'd have to consider with the contingency fund to fund this position. But we do feel it's very important. There's, obviously, it's a jewel, as we've said, you know, in Carroll County and the center of Westminster. So it's easily accessible, and, you know, I think that makes for some other maybe security concerns, you know, to have someone there on-site is preferable. And so that's where we've determined, and I guess basically, it's been also determined that it needs to be a part-time employment position, not a contractual, or not an independent contractor as we've had before. So that's where we are. You know, Jane here to answer any other questions we have about the duties and responsibilities of the position, but we're here to talk about that.
So was the past caretaker paid?
No. They basically, he lived there, right. And that basically was the compensation. He was issued a $10.99 each year for the value of the apartment.
Yeah.
So.
My questions are more for Ted, and that's when you say wiggle room, or it's going to take away something.
Right.
And possibly come from reserve for contingency. I mean, what, Ted, can you elaborate on one or any of that?
I don't think wiggle room was, were my words.
They were mine.
Doesn't seem your nature.
No. In any budget, arguably, you can say, well, there's money there, so maybe we can find a way to make it work. But if there's money there, it's there for a purpose, so I would not be advocating for an idea that we can just somehow absorb this. And even if you did, that would only be out this year. The position, of course, goes on, and the costs go on.
And that's not my preference either. My preference would be to say you're going to fund it right off the bat. You know, not use existing funding from the farm museum's budget.
So where are we recommending we're funding this from?
Basically, the contingency, I guess.
Right, you would need to do a transfer from your reserve for contingencies.
So when would we do that? When somebody's hired, or that should be the next meeting, or how urgent is the transfer?
Not urgent. We just needed to get it on the agenda sometime.
So the motion today would be to authorize the position, and then at an upcoming meeting, we would vote specifically on transferring the money for the position.
Yes.
And just out of curiosity, real quick, I know this is being allocated now as a part-time, 25-hour position. We do have other positions somewhat, I guess I would say, similar to this in fashion, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Burke?
We certainly did. I'm not sure if we still have them out at Wreckin' Parks. The issue becomes the status of the individual.
Sure.
Are they truly independent contractors? For example, if we say, if we hire a company to go cut the grass at the farm museum, we're not out there on the back of the mower with them, telling them what to do.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that we do have, we have had other situations with caretakers. Is that correct? Okay, that's all I was asking. Thank you.
Motion to authorize a PT Carroll County Farm Museum caretaker position.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further questions or discussion?
I apologize, but this is not allocating dollars. This is just putting a position out there.
Authorizing a position. Yes.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maintenance support and upkeep for the Central Maryland Area Radio Communications Network.
Morning to you both.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Department of Public Safety requests your approval to renew the annual maintenance agreement with Motorola Solutions, Inc., for Carroll County's share of the cost for the maintenance support and upkeep of the C-Mark Regional Radio System per-service agreement contract 39827 in the amount of $65,000. This amount is approved in the FY 26 budget.
Good morning, commissioners. Back in 2006, Carroll County had entered into an agreement to contribute towards the cost of the support, maintenance, and upkeep of the C-Mark radio system. There's no increase in cost from year to year. The cost has been held steady for many years. This is our annual contribution. Every jurisdiction within the Central Maryland area splits the costs equally, and we're just asking for approval to be able to expend those funds beginning, after the beginning of fiscal year 26.
Motion to approve Carroll County's payment share of C-Mark maintenance support and upkeep to Motorola Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $65,000, as well as authorize the Director of Public Safety to execute the FY 2026 maintenance support and upkeep agreement with Motorola Solutions for the C-Mark Regional Radio System.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Now, we're going to talk about phone system refresh project.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Department of Public Safety requests spending authority approval to spend up to but not to exceed $3,268,456.61 for the Vesta 911 phone system refresh project to Carousel Industries of North America, Inc. This purchase will be made utilizing Maryland State Master Contract. This amount is approved in the FY 25 budget. This purchase will be covered at 100% by the MD 911 Board Project Number 25-355.
Good morning again, commissioners. Thanks for having us again today. I believe Ashley should be on virtually, or I'm hoping that that's working. She is actually flying back from California. She's sitting in the airport right now, so hopefully all of the technology is working. If not, if you have any specific questions that I can't answer, we can certainly get her to answer them on the technical side later. Recently, the Maryland 911 Board did approve a request from Carroll County to fully fund the cost to refresh our 911 phone system. So this is the system. It's a standalone system that allows us to receive and process 911 calls. There's Ashley. The project includes multiple workstations at each of the primary and alternate public safety answering points in the county, as well as two positions at each of the secondary P-SAPS located at the Westminster Police Department and at the Maryland State Police Westminster Barrack. This project adds cybersecurity monitoring, both endpoint detection and response, as well as managed detection and response to our system, and it also incorporates an improved language translation service.
Motion to approve the spending authority for Vesta 911 phone system refresh project to Carousel Industries of North America Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $3,268,456.61.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
If I can just apologize, just very quick, because I see Ashley on here, and Val, I think Roberta may have shared with you an incident that happened with me.
Yes.
A few days ago. I was coming home from my mother's in Columbia, and I was on 32. And a van went from right lane, left lane, all the way to the shoulder, took out this massive light pole on 32, and then stopped. And I was, like, literally right behind, so I pulled over. All the airbags exploded and broken glass all over the place. So a couple gentlemen went out and checked on the van, you know, and the person, and she was alive, and so I decided, okay, I was going to do the 911. So I called 911. But as I called 911, I walked out of my car to see if they're okay and the person's status, and then I realized I'm on Bluetooth, so I had to go back in my car. And this young lady is 911, 911. So I spoke to her, this was in Howard County, and the adrenaline was flowing. And I told her, hey, this just happened. I was right behind this van. Where are you? I said, I'm on Highway 29, next to whatever exit. She goes, well, I have you pinned on 32. I said, oh, yeah, I'm on 32. Again, adrenaline flowing. But I was able to share with her, you know, the incident, talk to, you know, the folks that were helping, license plate, all that kind of stuff. And she shared with me, you know, okay, this is what you do. Don't touch the woman. Is she conscious? Is she responsive? Any visible injuries? Electric vehicle or not, or hybrid? And no, it was a van. So, long story short, hung up with her within, oh, a minute, two ambulances, two big fire trucks, a few police block off 32, and we watched them carefully extract the woman. She was an older woman. And, you know, let's pray that she is okay. She was conscious, but it was, it could have gone so many different directions. And, you know, me and a couple guys working together to do this, the adrenaline flowing, and the fortunate 911 caller in her calm voice got everything she needed to share with the necessary resources to get to the incident. And, you know, we hope we don't have to go through that process on either end, but knowing that I just did, like, a few days ago, I was very, very impressed. I was in Howard County, but it's the same, you know, 911 is one big family, so you're doing well. So just thank you.
I'm glad that it was there for you.
Yeah.
911 is there 24/7/365 to get the right resources to the right place at the right time.
Yep. So now we'll shut up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to talk about food service operations for Carroll County Detention Center.
Morning.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office were before the Board in February of this year and received spending authority approval for food service operations at the Carroll County Detention Center in the amount of $277,100. The original $277,100 was an estimate, or estimated amount to encumber funds through the end of the fiscal year. We are requesting an additional $64,000 to cover June 2025 costs for the food service. The amount exceeds the 10% of the original spending authority approval, and per Resolution 116-2022, delegation of authority requires approval by the Board of County Commissioners to spend these additional funds. This purchase will be made utilizing the Calver County's contract 2025-016. This amount is approved in the FY 25 budget.
Good morning, commissioners. We're just here to kind of finish out the year. We'll be receiving our bills into July. At that time, it's very difficult, as the count changes by meal, what the bills will be weekly. So we're just here to finish up for the rest of this fiscal year.
Motion to approve the additional costs for food service operations to the Carroll County Detention Center inmates in the amount of $64,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, Prime Care Medical, Inc. billing.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office requests your approval to spend up to but not to exceed $140,000 in Prime Care Medical, Inc., for catastrophic billing and related medical expenses incurred through May and June of 2025 for Carroll County Detention Center incarcerated individuals for the current contract year. Prime Care Medical, Inc. is an approved-term contractor. The county currently piggybacks the contract for Prime Care Medical, Inc., utilizing Cecil County's RFP 21-04 that was competitively bid. The funds are approved in the FY 25 budget.
So, good morning, commissioners. Similar scenario in that we're into the last two months for this type of expense, so we're at a point where we wanted to come back before you to get the authority to pay the last of the bills for this fiscal year.
Motion to approve the spending authority for catastrophic billing and related medical expenses incurred through May and June to Prime Care Medical Incorporated in the amount of $140,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And now, Behavior Interventions, Inc.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office requests your approval to spend up to but not to exceed $31,075.95 to Behavioral Interventions, Inc., for electronic monitoring systems for the detention centers, home detention, and work release programs. This will cover the costs incurred through May and June of 2025. The county currently piggybacks the contract for Behavioral Interventions, Inc., utilizing Omni Partners contract that was competitively bid. The funds are approved in the FY 25 budget.
So, good morning again, commissioners. This is the third larger invoice that we have, similar to finishing up for the year for May and June expenses. The June ones, of course, we anticipate, but we're close enough where we were able to finish this up.
Motion to approve the spending authority for electronic monitoring systems costs incurred through May and June 2025 to Behavioral Interventions Incorporated in the amount of $31,075.95.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do the detainees themselves have to contribute any money towards this?
As far as this invoice, it does depend if there's charges or anything, depending what's court-ordered, but this is something that's negotiated, and it's part of the monitoring that pretrial services does.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Now, we have operating budget adjustments for CCPS.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. Okay, good morning, commissioners. We have four separate action items, all related to closing out fiscal '25 for the Board of Ed's operating budget. I assume you want me to present them one at a time, and then take action or just run through them.
What do you think, commissioner?
One at a time? Or all together?
Does anybody have objection to all at once?
Nope. I don't know.
Okay. Please.
The first one, and I'm going in order of the transmittal that came over to you from Superintendent McCabe. The first one is an operating budget adjustment, meaning an up or down adjustment, in this case, up to the '25 budget, and it relates to two areas where we had more revenue at the close of the fiscal year than we had anticipated in the early part of the fiscal year. Those two areas related to interest income and the medical prescription drug rebate program. The second item is a budget adjustment to close fiscal '25 using Board of Education fund balance for the adjustment, so again, a positive adjustment in terms of money up. And the two one-time actions that the Board of Ed would be using the fund balance for would be to complete the purchase of science of reading, new textbooks required by state curriculum for grades three through five. We were able to do grades K through two using federal ESAR money. This completes our ability to phase in that program, and $800,000 to cover increased utility costs, specifically in electricity. The third item is the, kind of, the typical year-end operating budget transfer, so this is not more or less money, this is just moving money. This is just moving money from certain of the major categories in our operating budget, where there might have been some surplus, to other major categories in our operating budget, where we, um, had some areas to cover at year-end. And then the fourth and final one is an adjustment, a positive adjustment to the food services fund budget. That's, for us, that's, as you know, a separate fund that's sort of self-sustaining. That program has to fund itself. And again, this is good news and positive. They had higher, um, income or revenue than anticipated due to both increase in federal reimbursement for meals and also ala co, ala cart. I think I'm saying that right. Ala cart sales.
So Tim, is it, Tim? Is it out of, uh, order if I was to make a motion incorporating all four action items together? Or should I do them one at a time?
Uh, either, either way will work.
I will make a motion to approve FY twenty-five operating budget adjustment twenty-five oh-one and twenty-five oh-two, FY twenty-five operating budget transfer twenty-five oh-one, and FY twenty-five food services budget adjustment twenty-five oh-one for CCPS.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and any questions or comments? And, uh, th- this is pretty standard. We, we approve your guy's budget. We don't tell you how to write every check, but when you change major categories, you need to come to us for approval.
Correct. And Maryland education law requires, um, the superintendent to bring any adjustment or transfer, either way, to first the Board of Ed by state law for their approval, and then within thirty days to you for your approval.
And they approved this at their June meeting?
They did at their June meeting, June eleventh.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're gonna talk about Upper Beckleyville Road over Murphy Run, the replacement.
First I should say, um, Deb wants you to not approve this because this bridge being closed diverts traffic from her neighborhood. I don't know how much weight you'll give that. Okay, this is one of those items where you're gonna be considering a transfer, which will enable the next item, which is the award of a bid to, to happen. And this is a little bit more complicated than, than most. There's several things going on here. One, there was a federal bill to provide money for infrastructure. It gave us one million dollars toward this project that we didn't have to match at all. And, you know, most of our bridge projects are eighty percent federal-funded, twenty percent county-funded. So we got a million dollars without any match. Uh, the project was more than a million, so the next piece was the standard eighty-twenty. Then we thought that we were gonna get more federal money. And at this point, another complication, uh, we made a mistake. We took some money off of this project that shouldn't have come off. Uh, so that leaves us where we are today, and two things need to happen. The, the bid is higher than what we budgeted, so the project needs more money to, uh, get it there. And we also need to fix the mistake that, that we made. In the end, that change didn't change the initial budget of the project or what it needs to be now. It just complicated getting from one to the other. So, uh, today what you'd be approving is, uh, three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, five-hundred dollars of local funds to this project and eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, three-hundred dollars of additional federal funding for this project.
And that's all in resolution twenty-five OC?
Yes. You can see the, oh.
What's in your book is not matching the resolution.
Uh, the number, yeah, the numbers I thought were.
Yeah, I, I mean, the one that you have to sign here in my folder says the original budget that was approved was one million, six-seventy-six. Um, it was reduced by four-hundred-and-eighteen thousand. The current budget is one million, two-fifty-eight. And then the supplemental appropriation is one million, two-fifty-two, eight-hundred dollars. And broken down, just like Ted had said, three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, five-hundred in local funds. And then an increase in the federal, uh, funds of eight-hundred-seventy-nine thousand, three-hundred.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you, you didn't have this. We actually made some changes yesterday because how we were showing this, I didn't think accurately reflected what, how this had all played out. But I think you must still have that one.
Yeah.
So, so we have the, the two items, the one for the resolution that's approving, approving the resolution for the replacement of Upper Beckleyville Road over Murphy Run. But then the second one, uh, which is specifically for the awarding of the contract.
Right. Public Works will come up behind me.
Oh, okay.
Assuming that.
They need to transfer the money so they can ask, so they can ask for it.
Yes.
And that would be covered in the language of the resolution twenty-five oh-three?
Yes.
So for this item, all, all I need is approval for resolution C twenty-five dot zero-three.
Motion to approve resolution C twenty-five dot zero-three for the replacement of Upper Beckleyville Road over Murphy Run.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, you, that money's transferred, you get to come up and ask for it.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning. I'll take a, just a second, commissioners, before, uh, case starts and introduce our bridge program manager to my left, Krista Zigafus, who's also our bridge engineer. So when you hear us doing all this speaking about running the program and keeping us in line and really marching this program forward, it's all her.
Nice to meet you.
I have a question, but before you start, if that's okay. The road was limited to traffic, and then it was closed. So none of this happened while it was closed. That was a different item of work so far, and now this will complete the bridge.
Yeah, so, um, we have been watching ever since, uh, every, before and since Krista has come into the position of Bridge Program Manager for the county, we have been watching this bridge. And in fact, for almost a year, uh, we had been in consultation with the state, um, to get everything done. And quite frankly, um, it wasn't moving the way it should have moved at the state level, even though we were constantly and consistently on it. During that time, we had to downgrade the bridge or post it, uh, which many people, you know, really weren't happy with. And then, uh, this continued. We continued to elevate it to the state, continued to push, continued to push. And then ultimately, our last inspection showed it had indeed failed. Uh, so we had no, um, no other course of action at that time but to put in the close. But we didn't waste our money on a close. So in fact, the traffic plan and the detour that went up will be part of this construction, and it will not change. You have, you approved that money previously. But now we're here before you with all these changes to get the actual construction project for the bridge approved so that we can continue to march forward.
And so could you remind me of the specific amount, just so I have that correct for the purpose of this?
And he's gonna go over.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Gonna go over everything, just like we normally.
They're gonna tell us.
I threw us off.
I probably shouldn't have asked a question before, but now they're gonna tell us the.
It got quiet for a second, so I figured I'd better say something.
Now we're gonna hear about the low bidder and what they wanna do.
Uh, the Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Engineering requests your approval to award a contract for the replacement of bridge number CL dash three-eight-three on Upper Beckleyville Road over Murphy Run to Kinsley Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of one million, four-hundred forty-four, forty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-ten dollars. The Bureau of Engineering solicited bids with four respondents. The amount is approved in the FY twenty-five budget now.
So the commissioners, this is the Upper Beckleyville Road structure, or bridge, as they're commonly referred to. It's just west of Baltimore County line, built in nineteen sixty. Some additional beams were added in two thousand and five. And it's currently closed due to additional deterioration as, as we've discussed. Um, as was mentioned in the previous, uh, discussion, this project is part of the Federal Aid Bridge Program. And, uh, we are awarded IIJA, or the Infrastructure Investment and Job Act, a hundred percent funding for up to a million dollars, as Director Zaleski said earlier. Um, the additional four-hundred-and-forty-three, one-ten is eligible for the eighty-twenty split, uh, with the county responsible for twenty percent or eighty-eight, six-twenty-two. We have asked M dot S H A for some additional funding, uh, but we haven't received a response to date. There are a hundred and twenty working days, that's working days, on this project, which is expected to take approximately one year to complete. But that's because of environmental restrictions that we have to deal with, with the state, uh, the stream, and we have bog turtles there, which you've probably heard us mention before. Uh, with the bridge being closed, the county's already, uh, hired that contractor. As I spoke to you earlier, we've installed the temporary detour. And then, uh, if you approve this, uh, then we will finalize all the contractual paperwork and the meet with the contractor to, uh, get a start date, depending on material availability. So, um, the other thing that Krista and I had discussed this morning is we know that everyone, including us, has received a lot of questions on this project, particularly about the closure. And, uh, we are thinking of doing, um, after this, if approved, an FAQ letter to go out within a certain radius to the residents, just to let them know what our timeline is. Look, if we could blink and have it there tomorrow, we would, uh, but we can't. Uh, and we are moving this along as expeditiously as possible. Any detail questions? I'll direct to Krista.
Can you include the, uh, local fire companies and emergency people in that?
Yeah, no, and frankly, we will, again, but they already are.
Oh, I know, I know.
We speak to all of them, uh, and we now use, uh, not only our contact list, but we also use the additional DEFEMs contact list and route everything through them. So we keep the communication open.
The, the only thing I heard today was in one year, everybody will be happy.
Well, yes, and, uh.
Not me.
I think it's your district, right?
I can.
Yeah.
I move the Board of Commissioners award the contract for the replacement of bridge number CL three-eight-three on Upper Beckleyville Road over Murphy Run to Kinsley Construction in the amount of one million, four-hundred forty-three thousand, one-hundred-and-ten dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Now recovered material operations and transfer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
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 Morning, commissioners.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Solid Waste requests your approval to renew the yearly recovered materials operations and transfer contract with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority in the FY twenty-six budgeted amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, fifty-five dollars. Funds are approved in the FY twenty-six solid waste enterprise fund operating budget. Balsam LLC performs the scope of work under the authority contract.
Good morning, commissioners. So this is our, uh, contract through the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority, as he's indicated. Uh, this is for the loading and transfer of single-stream recyclables, otherwise known as recoverable materials. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, recovered materials. Recyclable materials delivered to Carroll County's Northern Landfill Transfer Station are loaded and hauled by Balsam to the Waste Management Recycle America Sorting Facility in Elk Ridge, Maryland. Uh, and then, so the contract is for initial three-year term with five one-year renewals at the county's sole discretion and ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight. The FY twenty-six budgeted service charge is approximately sixty-five, I'm sorry, sixty-four point oh-five per ton, and we anticipate transferring thirteen thousand, one-hundred tons for processing. We respectfully request the Board for approval to renew the contract for FY twenty-six at an estimated cost of eight, eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, oh-five-five.
Motion to renew the recoverable materials loading and transfer contract with Balsam LLC through the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six and grant spending authority in the amount of eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars and fifty, no, I'm sorry, eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, fifty-five dollars. That was like fifty-five cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Um, now processing and recycling of recovered materials.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Solid Waste requests your approval to enter into a contract for processing and recycling of recovered materials with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority. The FY twenty-six budgeted amount for this service is one million, one-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Funds for this scope of work are approved in the FY twenty-six solid waste enterprise fund operating budget. Under this arrangement, Waste Management Recycle America is responsible for processing, marketing, yeah, marketing recyclables deliverable, or delivered from the Northern Landfill Transfer Station to their Elk Ridge, Maryland facility. The county's contract will be held with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority, which will in turn hold a service agreement with WMRA.
Yeah, so commissioners, this is, this is, uh, so we just talked about the, the loading and transfer. This is the processing, the processing facility. Um, and so this was just recently bid. The contract expires June thirtieth of, of this year. Uh, so we went out to bid through the authority, and, uh, the most advantageous to Carroll County is the Waste Management Recycle America facility.
Motion to approve an agreement with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority for processing and recycling of recovered materials through WM Recycle America and grant FY twenty-six spending authorization in the amount of one million, one-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars under this contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So now we're gonna talk about waste transfer and disposal.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Solid Waste requests your approval to renew the yearly waste transfer and disposal contract with Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority in the budgeted amount seven million, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Funds for this scope of work are approved in the FY twenty-six solid waste enterprise fund operating budget. Under this arrangement, Republic Services is to load, transfer, and dispose of waste from Northern Landfill Processing Facility and Transfer Station at Republic Services' Modern Landfill in York, Pennsylvania. The county's contract is held with Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority, who in turn holds a service agreement with Republic Services.
So this is, uh, you know, now, now we move from the recyclables to the waste side. This is the, uh, the, the loading and transfer of the waste to the landfill in Pennsylvania. Uh, we're currently in year seven, I'm sorry, we're currently in year eight of our ten-year agreement. Uh, it's, it's, it's an agreement that has optional one-year renewals, and we'd like to exercise that one-year renewal for this, this year.
Motion to renew the waste transfer and disposal services contract with the Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six and grant spending authority in the amount of seven million, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, eh, what percentage do you think this is of the, of the waste that comes in there that gets transferred out versus what goes into a cell? Do you, I, and do you know that offhand, or?
I believe, that's, 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 um, dictated by the board. I believe we're at twenty-five percent this year, um, landfill and the other, the remaining gets transferred. I can definitely get to the answer on that. I just shouldn't, I'm, I'm just drawing a blank on that. But, um, yeah, we get, we get a total of roughly a hundred-ten to a hundred-and-twenty thousand tons per year, and I believe twenty-five percent is what, what we were to meet this year. It might have, it might have jumped up to twenty-seven, but there, we, we, we come to you every year and ask you how much you want us to, to make sure we bury. We've already met our goal for this year. Well, obviously, because we're getting, getting near the end of January or June, but we, we hit our goal probably about a month or two back.
Okay. Any other questions or? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, uh, spending authority services at the recycling center.
The Office of Procurement in conjunction with the Bureau of Solid Waste requests spending authority approval to spend up to but not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the recycling services for FY twenty-six to the Arc of Carroll County. The Arc of Carroll County is an approved term contractor. This amount is approved in the FY twenty-six budget.
So this is, we, we, we staff the recyclable area with, uh, Arc, an Arc employee and our client. Um, and the program's been a great success. Uh, we've, we've been doing this since nineteen ninety-eight, and, uh, you know, the, the staff are incredibly diligent at policing the area and, I'm sorry, policing the cycle drop-off area and removing materials that aren't accepted in our program out of the, out of the dumpsters that are there.
Motion to approve recycling services. Motion to approve recycling services by the Arc of Carroll County in the amount of ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Spending Authority Household Hazardous Waste Event Services.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation of the Bureau of Solid Waste requests your approval to spend an estimated amount of eighty thousand dollars for semi-annual household hazardous waste event services performed by MXI Environmental Services. The estimated amount is based on the volume of deliveries by county residents, MXI Environmental Services is contracted by Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal Authority to perform these services. This amount is approved in the FY twenty-six budget.
This is our household hazardous waste events, I think you are fairly familiar with those, provides for the collection of household hazardous waste, keep them, keeping, you know, keeping the people from dumping it in their yard or stream or in the woods or, you know, places that we don't want them to dump it. In addition to that, we, we provide shredding at that event, and also the Health Department comes in for no cost, and they, they run a prescription drug take-back program and Sharps Take-Back Program, and they provide some education at no cost for us at this event as well. We, we estimate that these events are gonna be about forty thousand each, but it depends on how many people show up, so history's shown it's between thirty-eight thousand and forty-two thousand. We feel this, this should cover next year's event, the two, the two next fiscal year events.
Motion to approve the FY twenty-six household hazardous waste event services to Northeast Maryland Waste Disposal in the estimated amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
If I could, I just want to mention, the next, the next household hazardous waste shredding event, and shredding event is scheduled for October fourth, from eight to noon, just for the, for the public's information.
Cool.
Now, CLSI to prepare an amended plat and grading-only plan documents.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation of the Department of Public Works were before the Board in January of twenty twenty-four and received approval to award a contract to CLSI in the amount of thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars to prepare amended plat and grading-only plan documents to define the future access for the users of the existing Vision Way Drive to connect to Meadow Branch Road in connection with the Carroll County Regional Airport's runway and taxiway relocation and safety enhancement projects. Since the time a change order has been issued in the amount of thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars, which exceeds the ten percent of the original contract, and per Resolution one one six dash twenty twenty-two, delegation of authority requires approval by the Board of County Commissioners to spend these additional funds. This amount is within the FY twenty-five budget, this purchase will be covered at ninety percent by grant reimbursement from the FAA.
Commissioners, what happened here is, when I originally contracted with CLSI, the scope of work was to develop concept drawings to get us through the, the process, to get, to sit, to sit down with homeowners and, and get signatures on these drawings. As we were going through the developer review process, we realized it's best to get the entire set of plans through a hundred percent construction, so that when we sit down at the table, we need to, need to sit down once, get the mileage signed by the homeowners, and, and then we can move on. This was always going to be a part of the larger project, so this now does not have to be done in the larger project, so if that's...
And it's always fun that ninety percent is reimbursed, so. I'll make a motion to approve the additional costs to prepare amended plat and grading-only plan documents to CLSI in the amount of thirty-one thousand three hundred dollars, of which the FAA will reimburse the county for ninety percent of the costs, or twenty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, and the county will pay one hundred and five of the costs, or three thousand one hundred and thirty dollars out of the Airport Enterprise Fund.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any questions or discussion?
I'm gonna amend that because I read that one wrong, I think that's supposed to be ten percent, not one oh five. In the recommended motion, I said one oh five, it should be, I think it's a typo.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Just, I wanted to make sure, like, I wasn't supposed to be listing, like, the number of properties this was gonna happen at, but I think it's supposed to be ten percent, right?
It's supposed to be ten percent, you're correct.
Yes, yes. Five should be a percentage, yes, yes.
So I will amend my motion to ten percent instead of one oh five.
Second.
Have a motion, amended motion, a second. I'm confused, but I think we're all in favor of this, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good catch.
Now, do I need to revote on the amended motion, or we're covered?
I think we're good.
No, you're good.
Yeah, we're good, I think we're good.
We're covered, okay, good, thank you.
That was a good catch, y'all.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do.
I have no one on the line, sir.
Okay, no one on the line, but we have?
Andrew Manning.
I was just gonna ask Ed if he wanted to step out last minute. Thank you so much, guys. I just wanted to piggyback on, as there are common about disagreements, we talk and work it out. I guess that shows how sincere his words are, but my name is Andrew Manning. However, it gives me great validation and affirmation of my gender, if you refer to me as Don Quixones. I don't use this particular, particular vernacular, but this joke basically wrote itself, it's time to address the pig in the room. I would like to share that I've been assigned a police escort anytime I attend the public meetings as we are here today. This started sometime in early twenty twenty-five. A couple months ago, in response to the ridiculous and unwarranted intimidation tactic, I bought a crop top on clearance from Walmart, wore it under my white polo, and proceeded to wear it to the following meeting. After this meeting, I was contacted by a Carroll County detective who told me I was no longer welcome to attend the public meeting on Thursdays, according to someone above him. As for my attire, sounds like a personal problem to me if a guy with an A cup is somehow distracting to a roomful of men. Secondly, I've always been respectful and undisrupted throughout my meetings I've attended. I've always kept my comment within the three minutes and have never raised my voice. Some of these words are hard to read here, voice or made or insinuated any threats of violence or harm. Originally, the only thing that brought me here was my dissatisfaction with the register of wills and the orphans court. I'm gonna skip all that. As to what it is I'm doing here, my purpose, now and going forward, I have pivoted, and it's all thanks to you, Ed. Just like life, wise old scarecrow told me, you can do wonderful things with your life if you really believe in your dreams. I had a dream once upon a time, me, Don Quixones, believed he was meant to run for president. I even created my slogan. If you guys gave Jim a little bit extra time, just give me like thirty seconds. The March of the Penguin. I believe that the days of old are no longer, the Bible and churches, it's time to start spreading a new word, the internet is our god now. Those unfamiliar with the movie The March of the Penguins, it is about penguins who just start marching towards a purpose with no clear explanation how they know where and when, you know, bloop, 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 bloop. The real war is with God. What is the one thing in life you never question but finally accept? Death. But since you can't go to war with God, well, as they say, if you can't be them, might as well join them and get the Green Dining like Mass Effect. But make no mistake, my dream has died. I have no delusions that this world, I have no delusions that this world, that this would be seen as nothing more than a joke to most, if not all. However, thanks to my newly found gender to identify as a donkey, and you opened the door for this, Mr. Kyler, and incorporating my pronoun, Jack slash ass, my confidence to see this through has been renewed, even knowing the likelihood to fail is almost guaranteed. I hope that this deep dive into my purpose and what I'm doing here has been clarified. I just want to say thank you to my fans, and by fans, I mean the lovely lady at the library.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, my slogan is, how do I know which way to go? And it's a penguin with a little Wi-Fi signal. All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. Hopefully, you know, you guys could just talk it out, I'm no threat to anybody here, I don't disrupt anybody, and I just like to speak of public comment now and again. Maybe you could remove the police escort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one, thank you.
Admin open, does any, anyone have any topics or any items they want to discuss?
No, sir.
Looks like a gender review.
Hello, Wanda, how are you doing? Doing well, thank you.
Okay, Monday, June thirtieth doesn't show any activities, on Tuesday, July first, I will walk. Commissioner Rostine, did you hear that? I'm walking in the parade, I'm not riding.
Okay. Okay.
Wanda, would you note that Monday, June thirtieth is my birthday, it should be on the agenda?
Oh, right. So do we need to modify the agenda and do something that day? No, we're okay? Good. Wednesday, July second shows open, Thursday, July third, closed admin, open session, priority Carroll, approval to purchase for the fleet, contract approval, commissioning services, approval to purchase pavement testing and rehab, approval to purchase furniture, approval to purchase bare branch concrete floor installation, contract renewal, maintenance and support for the Mitchell Humphrey Financial Management System, contract renewal, PDS Vista Maintenance and Licenses, contract renewal, Court Smart Support Services, contract renewal, Intelligent Time System and Annual Support, insurance premiums, Alliant Insurance Services, insurance premiums, R, C, M, and D, Spending Authority, Claims Processing Account Funds, discussion on development review fees, discussion on approval of resolution, Ponty Run Waterstead, watershed, study resolution, briefing discussion on requests for a public hearing for the County Water and Sewer Master Plan, public comment, open admin, agenda review, Friday, the fourth, offices are closed in observance of Independence Day, Saturday, the fifth, shows nothing, and Commissioner Rostine has a podcast.
I can't believe we're already going in July.
I tell you, believe it, the year's half over. Monday, July seventh, shows no activities. On Tuesday, there's a community solar hearing, Commissioner Kyler.
And I'll, Wanda, I'll be attending that as well.
Ag Center Board Meeting at seven, that I, I'll tell them I may or may not be late for that, probably will late. On Wednesday, Arc Houses Groundbaking, Commissioners Gordon, Kyler, Rostine, and Vigliotti, Mako Legislative Initiative Committee, Commissioner Rostine, nine thirty is Farm Museum Board Meeting, Commissioner Vigliotti.
So I think the Farm Museum is pushed back to the sixteenth, I'm pretty sure it'll be on the sixteenth instead of the ninth.
Mako Legislation Committee interim meeting, Commissioners Kyler and Rostine, Board of Ed Meeting, shows none of us attending, Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Commissioner Gordon. On Thursday, closed admin, open session, priority Carroll, MDE, Secretary Will Tour of the county, comment letter for Westminster Annexation, Carroll County Planning Annual Report, after-school program for Carroll County Middle Schools, annual maintenance support and lifecycle management for radio system, public comment, admin open, agenda review, Friday shows no activities, Saturday is the Recreation and Parks Second Annual Car Fest, and Commissioner Kyler will be there at the Farm Museum at eleven, and Commissioner Vigliotti does the podcast. Any changes or anything else on agenda? Thank you. Now, I guess we need a motion to go into closed and then adjourn at the end of closed.
Yes, you're gonna close for legal advice and land acquisition.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.